All right, it is time for the pre-meeting of the Western Planting Commission from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Commissioner President say for Commissioner Shelton. And let's jump into our abundant schedule. First, take a look at everything that we've got going on, and then if there's time left over, we do have a little bit of training. Available so first off, any questions about the minute? Okay, planning commission meeting schedule thoughts? The only thing I'll bring up during the meeting is the November, the first one November happens to be election day, so we may want to move that one. Even though it's a federal election. All right, we'll talk about it when we get there.
Yes, I don't disagree if you don't do it because it is election day, but I don't have a problem with it.
No opinion. Matt thinks we should meet everybody.
All right, Highland, we'll go through the public times of finance by the planning commission. So Highland South lot three pad C. Taylor, you want to run us through that one?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Oh, two that are continued.
We actually were contacted by the developer of this project on the way into the meeting tonight. And they're going to make some changes to that, so we're going to ask for Highlands three C to be continued to the next meeting because they agreed to change that out.
And that is not one we've received any public comment on, so. We don't think we expect anybody to be here for it, but if we are. Scott Duncan, just try to address that one similar to what we're doing with the other. Okay. Uh, Island South lot five at B. Taylor, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, so this is the other one, it's uh, just across the. It's shown as existing drive access here, um, it's a two lot, uh, sorry, two tenants pad site next to the new Home Depot. Um, the only issue that really comes up with this one that we haven't addressed in the staff report is the existing drive access and the one on the north side, which provides access to the site were shown to be built with lot three. Because lot three was going to come in before this, so we'll probably just want to include a condition that those drive accesses need to be approved prior to. Or to build parts of this being constructed because they're not showing it a lot five construction plans. Uh, otherwise we can move them for lot five construction plans if we have to, but we just need to make sure that access is provided to fifty-six hundred west before lot five is constructed. Um, we did take this to DRC in um, October to look at the elevations, um, we can see here. What those examples were, the DRC liked them, they recommended approval with no changes. Um, this is in the Canadian commercial future land use and it's zoned S D two. Uh, so the use is a conditional use only because of the drive through. Um, staff isn't recommending any conditions of approval and we are recommending uh, approval of both the conditional use and the site plan. Happy to answer the questions the commission may have.
Question for staff? All right, thanks. It's nice to have one or two that are straightforward. Okay, Carol Way retail?
All right, this one was also me, um, it's at approximately twenty-eight seventy-seven west seventy hundred south, that twenty-eight seventy-seven west is Carol Way. That's a private road, it's just located to the west of the Learning Tree um, daycare. Uh, this, what they're posing is actually a two tenant drive-through building, so it's going to be a soda coffee shop. Um, so there's two drive-throughs here that you can see, um, like a little bit uh, nuanced for how it works, but there's both of the uh, tenants will have the drive-through on the south side of the building and then one of them will continue through. And the second ones drive-through actually continues all the way around the building, we have an escape lane outside of that. Uh, access here is provided on to Carol Way with no access going on to seventy-eight hundred south. We have completed the traffic study for this project, I didn't recommend any mitigation. Our city traffic engineer had to view the traffic study and he agrees with these studies analysis and recommends no mitigations. Um, what we're looking at new trips, these are trips that aren't pass-through trips, we're looking at sixty A M peak trips and about fifty-three P M. So in the morning. So a non-pass-through trip is a trip that is not just already going past and sees this, oh, I do want to sell their coffee, so pull off that somebody would actually choose to drive for this reason. Um, so that's working in the morning about an additional trip per minute in that peak hour.
Can I ask you a question? Just?
Yeah.
It's real suspended here, right? Um. Yeah, so, um. Sixty trips or sixty trips anticipated peak in the morning?
Yeah.
Is that per hour?
Yeah, so the A M peak is one hour time, so same with P M. Correct, that's the busiest hour of the day.
Thank you.
We did take these elevations to the planning commission for review, uh, not the planning commission, this is the planning commission, it's the DRC. Um, the DRC did have a recommendation um, to add some concrete between the Wayne Scott and the uh, upper portion of the building. That hasn't been done yet, so that is one of the uh, recommendations the staff is including in the uh, recommendations of approval. Um, the DRC also asked, we looked at the parking and the um, the flow, and so that we will see that uh, that has been changed quite a bit since this went to DRC, the number of parking spaces has been reduced and the number of stacking spaces has been increased. Um, and we feel like it's a better project and it functions a lot better than it previously. Uh, this again is uh, in the future land use definition of community commercial with the uh, zoning being uh, S D two. So the retail is permitted use there and the conditional use permit is for the drive-through. It is worth noting that this came in actually as a lot with the cottages at Apple Cross, it's part of that subdivision, so. Um, its access was always anticipated be off of Carol Way because of our master transportation plan. Uh, we want to actually allow any additional accesses in this location on the seventy-eight hundred, so that is anticipated accesses at that location. So as mentioned, we're not uh, recommending any conditions of approval, of approval, but we are recommending two requirements of approval be addressed, and that's one that the building um, elevations are updated to include that concrete cap above the Wayne Scott. And second, that the applicant revise their lighting plan, the photometric plan that shows no light trespass on to fifty-six hundred west or neighboring properties.
I noticed in a couple of spots it mentions fifty-six hundred west in this uh, staff report. And I assume that was just a typo.
Sorry. So one of the things Terry mentioned, I think is really important and uh, it needs to be brought up again when we get to the regular meeting is. Uh, correct me if I go wrong here, if this was part of that subdivision plan and already has that access off Carol Way, Carol Way being, I think, private street. They have full right of access just given the fact it's part of that subdivision plan.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, on to the next, Duffy's Lane subdivision, Lisa.
Good evening Commissioners, um, Duffy's Lane subdivision is a two lot subdivision located at seventy-two hundred South Redwood Road, seventy-two twenty-one. Um, it's pretty basic on the outside, um. However, the, it is a double fronting lot right now, which typically isn't allowed in the city. Um, the applicant is proposing to split that lot, so the, the westerly lot will front on Redwood Road and the easterly lot will front on seventy-two twenty south. Um, there's been, it, it's actually a good thing this is coming forward. Um, there's been a lot of ambiguous language in the recorded documents and know there was a lot of questions who really has control of this property at the time and how does it get um, dedicated to the city and that has been cleaned up with a corrected warranty deed about two weeks ago. Um, we have had two emails, as I understand from neighbors that were concerned. Um, I haven't seen the second one and it came in too late after I'd already left the office. Um, the first email, I'm, I'm sure you received that one. Um, the neighbor was concerned about the size of the lots. Um. The new lot that would be created on the east is actually eight thousand three square feet, so it did meet the lot bulk standards that it needs to. Um, they were worried that they wouldn't be able to, or they would not build a big enough house, but there is sufficient room on the house to get that size C Rambler on it. Um. Everything seems to be pretty good with this application, it's a good infill development.
Any questions? Yeah, uh, is the existing home going to stay up or is being torn down?
The plan is to keep it as is.
Okay, we'll look forward to that one, uh, cottages at Port Place.
All right, so this is actually the, an existing subdivision that's uh, just on the corner of Drake Lane and Redwood Road, so just north of the um, West Road Middle School. But uh, so Drake Lane is at about uh, seventy-four hundred south, to give you an idea where this is. Um, so this subdivision was uh, re-zoned to its current zoning R three eight. Uh, with a senior housing overlay back in twenty eighteen, so along with that, there was a development plan there that kind of outlined the restrictions for uh, senior housing, um, keeping those limited to having at least one uh, person fifty-five year older living in home, um, among other things, but uh, so, um. Anyway, fast forward through to Gray. Uh, the current owner of Liberty Homes is uh, been having some issues trying to market some of their homes, uh, especially with the age restriction and the limit on bedrooms and so, uh, what they're proposing is to remove that senior housing overlay. Um. So this, this actually isn't the first time, um, we've seen this, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, Gary Cannon attempted to uh, remove the senior housing overlay as well, um. But uh, with it's ultimately unsuccessful, so this is kind of a, they're taking a little bit of a different approach this time. Uh, by converting one of the lots to a park and adding a few parking spaces while the train uh, help with that. Uh, that's about it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Question for staff? Well, that one pretty easy then, okay? Uh, and then, uh. I do have a question, I'll clean up in the, the actual meeting though, but if you want to start thinking about it, Osh Allen, I was curious what the reasoning was for the uh, uh, not allowing it last time, the city council seemed to be pretty clear they didn't want to.
Yeah, so the, the planning commission actually recommended, there's a recommendation to the city council, but uh, the city council unanimously denying it, so they just, um, I think some of the reasons they said is that, um. Originally it was intended when approved for senior housing, but it's um, to change it to, to market, uh. Family's and things like that, they didn't feel it was appropriate, I guess, so.
Okay. All right, and then the last item that caught my mind is uh, is we're looking at continuing that until uh, uh, just December fifth? Okay. Uh, and I don't think Gabe is going to have any questions on that because there's nothing in the packet, right? Okay, well, we made it through that a lot faster than I was expecting to, so Larry, you've got a little bit of time for some training.
Okay, so I appreciate the opportunity, I love it so much training, I think it's more for the benefit of the new planning commissioner, I think most of you are on here with these um, um. Two big master pine projects are appearing, but I also think it's good for, at least kind of a reminder for the planning commission. Uh, what was obtained in the two I'll be talking about uh, tonight are Wood Ranch and Jones Ranch, and Jones Ranch has since uh, changed their name or their project to uh, Drake Creek Highlands, but I will refer to it as, as Jones Ranch in this presentation, so I'll start with Wood Ranch. The Wood Ranch is literally at the very corner of our city. Uh, six hundred thirty-four acres, you know, that portion, there's a portion of it that was actually having to, we had to annex into the city and it's the very top um, middle section and right now there's a large gravel pit operation occurring there by uh, Huckle Gravel. Um, and then, so also the very north end and the very south end, the Wood family still owns, um. They're going to keep, I should say, they own a lot of the property still, but uh, they're going to keep probably a hundred, hundred and ten acres and then decide whether they want to develop that, and so the main portion that is being developed right now is kind of that uh, section in the middle with horns, as you can see on those lot lines there. Um, and so this was um, the long process. Uh, you know, Scott lost three years of his life on this, working on all of his debt, but it was a labor of love and we're all happy. Um, but out of this, now it resulted in, in a development, but also in creating new ordinance, this property, as you may or may not be aware, it's very fairly, has a lot of hills and so um, it was determined that the, the new ordinance would be uh, created and it's probably plant community hillside ordinance and that kind of takes into account the topography. Uh, not only in the way it's developed, but how uh, studies are done to make sure that the geography and the geology, I should say, of the area are um, episodic with development because uh, we've needed to find out what portions of it were still active in geology or very active and you know, what type of soils, if there's fault lines, that type of thing, so uh, this new ordinance puts a lot of protections in, that puts the owners on the developer to uh, prove to the city that homes can be built there uh, without the fear of failure, and I think, you know, over the years, whether it be the north end of Salt Lake County or the south end of Salt Lake County, we've seen effects of uh, building in very geologic hazardous areas, and so the city wanted to make sure that didn't occur here. And so the heart of six hundred plus acres is on the line, there's more of this plant community, master plant community. As you can see, this is a lot in plan, my wood grounds will consist of a lot of homes, with a little over three thousand homes. As you can see, roughly half of it will be uh, multifamily type developments similar to what you will see uh, in Daybreak in South Jordan, uh, and the reason for that is because it's most of the planning commissioner members are passing, planning commissioner members. It was a daybreak development that originally proposed this, however, with the sale of that company, um, they chose not to retain this piece, the Miller Company who bought Daybreak. Uh, but two of the main, uh, people at Daybreak when this was proposed are the ones spearheading this development, so it still is a daybreak type development. Uh, a lot about their family, but the, the design will really offset the density. Uh, a lot of open space in this development too, as you can see, all of the, the hillsides. Uh, what we call transfer development open space, the, some of the open space needs to be transferred with each phase of the project. And the planners don't work very well on these screens, but you can see that green spine up the middle. Uh, kind of next to the horns, uh, to the north there, that's, that's like one of the main boulevards. And that's where the model homes will be, the Bistro, the Community Center, uh, that type of thing, so it'll be really interior to the development. And, and so that is, um. You know, this of course shows the open space, so there is quite a lot of open space. Uh, you can see the red areas have trails surrounding a lot of open space. Uh, they've laid out the path there for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail if the county ever uh, develops that, and for your information, that's right at the mile mark in the Salt Lake Valley where the Bonneville Shoreline Trail is, so it, it is a home of the lot. You know, ours. That is a large development, the density does not ever exceed five units of the acre. You know, that's a gross density, but there is a lot of open space recreation opportunities. Uh, I think it's going to be a fine uh, development for West Jordan City, you know, this is probably a twenty, twenty-five year build out, so it's not a quick development, most of the utilities uh, will be served by an agency outside of West Jordan City called Kern's Improvement District. I think the last few phases will be served by uh, West Jordan City with water, and so Scott and Corbin and uh, deserve a lot of credit for going through a lot of meetings uh, to get this uh, to the approval phase through the planning commission and city council. And of course, the architecture of Wood Ranch is all uh, protected by architectural and patterned landscape, landscape patterned, but so everything before it's approved will, it has to go through their architectural review committee of thirty cadence who is a developer of Wood Ranch. Uh, before it's presented to the city and then the city will have a copy of this so we can make sure that the uh, architecture is meeting the uh, strict requirements, uh, that Wood Ranch has set up. And they're going, they're going to have five or six different home builders, you may know, you may know Scott, but I think uh, uh, it's not going to be one developer or one home builder, so you'll see a lot, they all have to follow exactly the plan that was approved by the planning commission and city council. So John Ranch is another large development. It's not right at the boundary of the city, but it is, now the west side of it is, um. It's almost six hundred acres an area, but very different in topography, you know, it's mostly uh, I'd probably say eighty percent of it, eighty-five percent of it is dry farm, very sloping, gently sloping land, but it does have this big wash running, Barney's Creek running to the middle of it. Uh, it is currently, the first phases are uh, being built. Uh, right now, phase one A and phase one B and C have been approved. As you can see on the very east side is Antelope, is it Antelope Bridge or Antelope, Antelope Bridge Elementary School? And then directly south of Antelope Bridge is um, the property that the school district uh, still owns. And it's bisected by Bacchus Highway and then the, uh, you know, the east end is sixty-four hundred west. It has uh, uh, one step street coming in from the Oaks, uh, Jordan Hills Villages and then the city has purchased eighty-six hundred south that was left over and another uh, east-west road will be going from sixty-four hundred to Bacchus Highway. This is another very long-term project, probably twenty, twenty-five years. And also, this is done a little bit differently, as you can see, this was uh, done to where the developer uh, could have some flexibility. You know, for not only changing markets, uh, changing, you know, markets, I guess, would be, you know, downturns in the economy so that they could still continue to uh, build units uh, during these, these harder times now. What I'll say is that they have to follow this map and the areas in yellow, which are village one, two, uh, thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and ten. Uh, those are all low-density residential, so those are the, what you would think of as the standard, probably ten thousand square foot lot type uh, development. Uh, the blue areas, they have a little more flexibility, they can intermix that with medium density uh, uses, and you can see on the very, on the legend in the plant community zone, it allows, if you wanted to build very low or low density housing in there, they could, uh, but it also allows uh, medium and high density and commercial. And let's hear you say, what protects the city from them just going crazy and building all these units, whether kept at two thousand nine hundred and sixty units, they can never build any more units than that according to the development plan and the development agreement. You can see also on the corner of Bacchus Highway and Ninety is South, on the very north side, there's a large commercial area, about forty acres on both sides of, of Bacchus there. Uh, there's purple spot there up at the very north end, that was uh, for a public facility. However, that's going to be moved down along Ninety is South and so the way you vary that uh, on this development plan is that all of the sub-area plans, which the planning commission, I believe, has approved one or I know they have approved one already, that would be varied with the John Drenz Subarea Plan for that area, and so it would never, it would never be left up to staff to move this willy-nilly. Uh, is always will uh, require the approval of the planning commission, and in that case, it'll have to go to the planning commission and city council. Uh, the land use is all the master pine community, you can see open space. And then there is, I spoke of, either low density or very low density or community commercial, has a large open space uh, spine, as I said, they cannot exceed the twenty-nine sixty units, they must follow the map. And I talked about the mixture of housing. This to see the open space, so total, this was negotiated with the council, and then we back up the you know, and so you ask, well, why couldn't they just build all multifamily in the blue area? As the planning, most of the planning commissions are where we have the balanced housing ordinance, which they're restricted to only build seventeen percent of the two thousand nine hundred and sixty units as multifamily housing, I should have calculated that out, but I haven't. Um, and so it'll, it'll be largely a single-family project. Uh, the John Drenz open space, uh, it'll have a really nice amenity along Barney's Creek, it will consist of uh, you know, a trail system, not only an asphalt, so Beckon just did it, but turning the can-do month, okay? Four hundred and three, you know, so, so, uh, you can see the, there's a lot of open space with a large uh, called a club ivory amenity, if you look on the east side, it's a thirteen acre park. Uh, but there'll be a lot of crowd systems and open spaces as you get towards the Ocker Mountains. Um. So it's really hard to read what I've highlighted up there, but uh, in a nutshell, the trail system will consist of, you know, bike trail and asphalt trail all along the uh, spine of Barney's Wash, and that will connect for other trail systems, so we calculate, you'll have about a three-mile trail system if you start at the top of the Oakers and go to where the, the trail actually ends near the airport. Um, so the ivory will be required to build a swimming pool as an amenity with the two hundred certificate of occupancy. And with the four hundred certificate occupancy, they're required to build a, uh, this five thousand square foot clubhouse. Um, this again, this bottom talks about the trail system, there are several uh, trails along roadways. But the main feature will be along the uh, the wash system. Um, and I will end on this, the John Ranch also has landscape guidelines that follow the water, uh, the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Water Efficiency Standards. Uh, we have a wall diagram that shows what kind of walls and fences will be built, there's architectural guidelines. And one thing that John Drenz does have is a moderate income housing requirement of at least five percent and not to exceed ten percent. Of at least five percent and not to exceed ten percent, and these are some of the architectural guidelines. Um of John Drans, every, every uh plan will have to meet the the guidelines of the uh. Master Development Plan, this also is backed up with the Master Development Agreement with the city and so. I think there are going to be two uh good developments on the uh west side of the city, so that's it.
Thank you, Larry, any questions? Great, I think it's time to raise a question, go ahead.
Larry, you mentioned the uh balanced housing ordinance with regard to John's Ranch, but does the same thing apply to Wood Ranch?
Well, Wood Ranch is negotiated, uh actually exempt them, the. Park Committee, you'll say, exempted them from the balanced housing ordinance and. I believe Scott correctly, if I'm wrong, but Wood Ranch is close to probably a fifty-fifty mix. Uh multi-family and single-family.
Yep, he's right, and there's there's subsets within there, the certain number of apartments versus townhomes, it gets pretty nuanced.
Uh I have a question, so. I'm best why you're bringing both of these ranches up to us right now?
I think it was just to remind the planning commission and educate what has already been approved. But you really don't have, there's a sub area plans and subdivisions come. Uh before you, we need to remember, we need to follow these two master plan agreements.
Okay, okay.
All right, well, time for us to move into the regular meeting. So we'll halt order the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three uh planning commission meeting, all commissioners are present. Um. We've got a crowd here today, this is different than normal, uh it's a good thing. So I want to start uh just by asking, is anyone here specifically planning to. Make a comment on items number three, the Highland South Lot Three Pad C? Or seven, the cottages at Parker Place Rezone, eight, I'm sorry, eight. Yeah, the compromise was general plan amendment reason on a master development agreement, thank you, uh if you are, please raise your hand.
She's here for Parker, please.
So for number three or number eight specifically? You're third, you're able to, right? Yeah, that's number seven. Okay, yeah, he he misspoke, you know, it's, yeah, you're you're fine, number seven. You're absolutely right, so for number three and number eight, both of those items uh. Will come up through the discussion, but the recommendation from staff is continue those until. Our next meeting on December fifth, we did not receive enough uh information to act at this point in time. Uh you're absolutely welcome to hang around for the rest of the meeting, but uh December fifth is when those will be discussed in greater detail. Um. Let's uh let's take a look at the business items we have for today, so first item is to approve the minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Fisher Hatch, were you first?
I was.
All right, go ahead.
Um I would like to go ahead and approve the minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
And Commissioner Quinney, uh let's take in that motion, right, we've got a motion, Commissioner Hatch is second from Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Second item under business items is to approve the twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting schedule. Karen had a chance to review that, any questions, concerns, comments?
I would like to make one change on it. It's okay with the commission and that is on November. What is it, November fifth? We go ahead and cancel that meeting, it's uh election day.
Oh.
It's the first Tuesday of the month.
From a staff perspective, are we okay cancelling that, we're just having the one meeting in November?
Okay, yeah, we'll have to make the adjustments, but this far in advance, yeah.
That's kind of what we figured. Okay, uh any motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the calendar for twenty twenty-four with one exception, cancelling the now November fifth, twenty twenty-four date.
Commissioner will win.
I second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion, motion, all in favor, I, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we get to the bulk and the meat of the meeting, and that is public hearings. So there's two types of public hearings on the agenda tonight. We don't usually go through this level of detail because there's almost never anybody here, so thank you for being here. Um. The first four items on the agenda, public hearings, final action by the planning commission meeting. This is it, it gets through, staff handles the rest of it and uh and off they go. The last two agenda items, seven and eight, are public hearings with planning commission recommendation. And final action by the city council, meaning that we'll make a recommendation, but the city council at a. Future meeting will take a look at it uh as well, weigh what we have to say about it and then make their decision. Um. In the back of the room, there are a couple of handouts, one is the agenda. The other is this welcome to the city of West Jordan Planning Commission Meeting Handout. I'm gonna read the first two paragraphs from this, just so everyone is aware. Um so during a regular meeting of the planning commission, the title of the agenda item will be read. The chairperson will invite the applicant to come to the podium to explain their proposal to the planning commission. Following the applicants, staff may present technical information along with exhibits. After staff has completed their presentation, the chairperson will put on the public hearing. Wherein the public is invited to offer their opinion concerning the application. When they wishing to speak, have been heard, chairperson will close the public hearing. And may invite the applicant back to the podium to clarify any issues raised during the public hearing. The planning commission will deliberate and vote on the project. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Public comments must be presented to the commission at the meeting in person or via electronic media or in writing delivered to the planning commission secretary. Uh we did receive quite a few there. Comments referencing race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin. Or any other classification protected under state or federal law shall be deemed irrelevant and are not appropriate. The planning commission makes all decisions based on adopted ordinances and not on public opinion. That last part is something that I want to stress. We are the board in West Jordan too, and a lot of the time, we're looking, if if a particular development or project were happening. Near our own, we would have a lot of the exact same concerns and be making some of the same comments. Uh. We will make uh recommendations based on uh certain criteria that are in the the packet. And most of the time, as long as the the property is legally owned, it could be legally developed. As it's shown on the uh the master plan with the city. It it's going to move forward. Sometimes we have an opportunity to take a look at it and say, here are some negative consequences from that. At which point the developer can actually go through and say, well, here's, here are ways, or sometimes our staff or even planning commission say. Here are ways that these uh negative consequences can be resolved. And it may be a little bit of an, possibly the developer, it may uh be some way of of. Uh fixing some of the the outcome or or helping with uh some of the negative impacts. But at the end of the day, uh we are here solely to make sure that this matches the doctor ordinances and master plans of the city. Uh the the handout to continue is to talk a little bit more about those details. Uh and what kind of decisions we'd be making uh with relation to them. So with that stated, we will go ahead and go to item number three, which is the Highland South Lot Three Pad C. Uh Gusher, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see those going in, and you're just staring at me.
I was energized by the speech, it was brilliant. Uh then I was just gonna make a motion that we continue item number three to the December fifth meeting.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so the Highland South Lot Three Pad C will be moved to the December fifth meeting.
Can we do number eight as well, just to get it out of the way?
Uh do we need to make motion, move it up in the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll use that procedure on motion first and then you can act on.
Uh let's go ahead and just wait. Uh number four, Highland South Lot Five, this is seventy-eight sixty-two South, fifty-six hundred West. Preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for restaurant, fast food, general, S E two zone. Peterson Development Company LLC with Barrett Peterson as the applicant and Taylor Jensen. On the staff side, uh for everyone present and Taylor. You're gonna be in a safety net, this is all the head of Home Depot. Yeah, that's right, perfect, okay, so everybody knows, hopefully everybody knows what we're talking about, uh we'll invite uh. Barrett, if you're here, to come on up and feel free to give us a a brief glimpse of what your project is. Uh it's the button on the right.
Button on the right, all right, actually, I'm not Barrett Peterson, I'm Jeff Seaman, but I work for Peterson Development and so uh thanks for. Letting us come and present, uh you know, this is just a retail pad out in front of Home Depot. We've had a lot of interest in these pads and uh we're looking to bring some business to you and some food to this neck of the woods, so. Pretty straightforward, um I can answer any questions after or right now if you have any.
I feel free to just give us a little bit of discussion, uh Taylor can move forward on some slides if you need any any visuals. Uh after you have some conversation, Taylor will be able to talk a little bit more. Public hearing, then we'll invite you up if there's any questions.
Fantastic, um so this this lot um and pad will parallel fifty-six hundred west. Um the existing drive out to the south you see there is the access to Home Depot, so uh. This this north of that and then there's a right in right uh right in, right out to the north of this pad, so. Um ideally, if you go to the um platte, which may be a couple of slides back. So um yeah, this this is lot five, um there's the, there's the drive aisle between lot five and lot six. And there's also that right in, right out between lot three and lot five, so and lot three is what was item three that got pulled today, so. But essentially, um lot three and lot five will both parallel uh fifty-six hundred west, so.
Yeah, any questions for the app?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um so you're getting the the lot ready for a a restaurant to come in?
Right.
Okay, but so there's no restaurant, yeah, that house.
You know, I I don't know, we've had a lot of interest, I don't know particular on this lot. I do on the other one that got pulled, that got pulled last second, because they gave me the heading today, um but um. And hopefully they're not hearing, hear me say that, um. Yes, 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 so, so no, um but I'm not sure exactly which um tenant we have in mind for this one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, appreciate your time. Taylor?
Great, thank you, Chair and Planning Commission, uh as you mentioned, we're looking at two items for this, uh the first is a site plan. It's a preliminary site plan, the final will go through staff approvals to make sure they have correct engineering and utilities. Um but the location where it's at is what we're approving tenants tonight, and then um. Fast food without drives-through is an administrative's additional use, uh so you know, that goes to a different body, but in order to kind of combine meetings, we're just doing those all together with this uh one item here. Last mention, this is a two lot um uh pad site, there's going to be two tenants in there, um. Uh he he mentioned it's off fifty-six hundred west, uh the one thing that kind of has changed, uh that's not in your packet that we did just want to address is. The existing access drive to the north and to the west. Were planned originally to come in with lot three, because I think lot three was going to be ahead of this, um so just. Any approvals will be conditional on lot three building those or the those facilities get moved into the lot five construction plan so that we can have proper access to lot five when it comes in. Um we have reviewed this for lot and bulk standards, it means I mean the lot size, parking requirements, stacking, so all of that looks good. Um to take these elevations toward designer view committee, uh we reviewed that in October. Um they recommended approval with no conditions and no dissenting votes. On a future land use plan, we are showing this as community commercial and the current zoning is S C two. Um so the use is consistent with both those zones and future land use designation. Uh staff is recommending approval with no conditions or approval. Um if the planning mission disagrees with staff analysis or identifies any anticipated detrimental effects. Um. Staff report talked about like what, five or six, I think, and it might be nine items to do, if that's the case, if we want to add conditions. Also, as as mentioned, we're recommending approval and happy to have any questions you may have this time.
All right, question for staff, Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, um. I'm just really concerned about how seventy-eight hundreds not being developed or large, made larger, I know there's plans to do that. But. It's already a busy, busy, busy road, um not all the time, but definitely during. You know, periods of rush hour, and it's just gonna get worse with uh more retail there, which. Is fine, however, really seriously, when is the road on seventy-eight hundred going to be um. Expanded so that there's, there's more there.
So maybe I can jump in, I think this would be a great opportunity for training next month. If we could just get a a quick update on all things seventy-eight hundred south, it doesn't uh pertain to the specific application. Uh though it's certainly something that uh I think an update would be great.
I I I wish that the staff here would let me know, okay, great.
You would, I'll jump in on this just a second, so seventy-eight hundred south, we have. The environmental thing completed on it, we have the funds in place, it's going up the bed as we speak. And the plans are to redo seventy-eight hundred south from the roundabout all the way to one eleven, it'll be five lanes. And the plans are to do that, start next spring, we're starting with the sewer replacement first. Do a part of it and then we'll put the road, lighten it on the other parts, so next spring.
Next spring means twenty twenty-four?
Next spring.
Okay, what about um? I know signal lights uh um make traffic worse, you know, especially on seventy-eight hundred, but um. I'm I'm worried about that too, in some areas uh where we still only have two lanes on each side. Um it's it's not good, I think on seventy-eight hundred north of Smith's. Uh pass Mountain View, yes. There's a a intersection that I think really needs a signal light, is there any plans for something there?
So let let's suppose that that isn't applied to this application, so let's see what I talk afterwards. And the answer is yes, but we can talk to you about what the plan is, in fact, I'll get you a copy of the plan on seventy, since you can know what's going on there after this meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that, I know we have to follow rules, but. This is kind of like a a good place to talk about that or at least mention it to the staff again to let them know that it's something that's really important, thank you.
All right, uh further just uh questions for staff? All right, well, this is our, uh it's technically second public hearing for the night, first one will continue, so uh public hearing uh. If you're here to discuss this particular item, feel free to come up, you'll have three minutes to uh address the planning commission, five minutes if it's a group. Uh the mic is already on, so we're okay from that perspective, Julie, is there anybody online? If there is someone online ready to uh discuss this, feel free to raise your hand and we'll call on you. All right, we'll go ahead and close uh the public hearing for this item and bring it back to the uh commissioner for discussion or motion. Commissioner Richardson.
Um I'm just going to say that um. I know this item will pass, but I'm gonna vote no, because I think we really need. The road on seventy-eight hundred expanded before we continue to approve. Development in that area, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have just one quick question for staff. I know in our pre-meeting, we talked about cement.
I have just one quick question for staff. I know in our pre-meeting, we talked about cement carpet. Covering a little bit higher, was that on this project?
No, that's on Caraway.
Okay, that's what I was asking, so. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that nobody else has any questions. Okay. I'm with the planning commission, approved preliminary site plan, Highland South, lot five, five E. A two tenant commercial pad building located at seventy eight sixty two south, fifty six hundred west. Subject to all of the requirements of approval, including adding the um, great north and west entrance prior to. Approval.
Commissioner Lynn?
I second that motion.
Further discussion to the motion?
Yeah, I would, I just have a thing. I just wanted to make a quick, I know Commissioner Richardson is concerned about the roads. Uh, very low on this, simply because we need to put the roads before the, the development. Flies in the face of what we talked about with the public at the beginning, right? We have an obligation to follow what's going on here, not. Put our opinions and our desires ahead of that, so just wanna make sure that we're voting appropriately, not emotionally on this.
Commissioner Richardson.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lynn, did you have anything else?
I seconded the, the motion. That's all I have, thank you.
We just have to make sure that that, the access road is included in this.
Yes, yeah, I did, he did.
Okay, uh. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, uh. Motion of eighty six point, I'll then against with Commissioner Richardson casting the negative vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Chair.
Yes, um, there's two motions because we have a site.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct, thank you. Commissioner Thomas, do you wanna run us through on that one?
Yeah, let's go ahead and complete that. I note that the general. Planning commission break the conditional use permit for restaurant fast food, um, general for the Highland. Highlands lot five, lot five, patent with the conditions and requirements of approval listed in the report, including the ones. Prior.
Uh, Julie will make it sound good. Yeah, Commissioner Quinney, I second that. Then motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Quinney, further discuss the motion, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, motion carries, uh, six to one with Commissioner Richardson casting the negative vote. Onto the next agenda item, Caraway Retail, which I'm guessing why most of you are here tonight. Okay, while we're going through them, uh, get together quietly and decide if you're each going to talk. Uh, separately, which case you get three minutes apiece, or if there's gonna be a group discussion, which case five minutes for each individual to come up. If it's multiple people with the, the same concern, it'd be much better if it's just one individual representing the group, but we leave that entirely up to you. So we will bring, uh, excuse me, I better read the agenda item. Item number five, Caraway Retail, twenty eight seventy seven, one seventy hundred south, preliminary site plan and administrative conditional use permit for restaurant. Fast food general, S C two zone, Iron Horse Real Estate, Tate Baxter, the applicant with Taylor Jensen representing. The city, uh, is Tate Baxter here? Come on up, sir. Uh, it's already on, so feel free to. Give us a background, an explanation of what you're looking at doing.
Great, um, Taylor, oh, yep, he's already got it up here, great. Um, yes, I am Tate Baxter, um, with Iron Horse Real Estate. We often have West Graham, um, with Iron Horse Real Estate here as well. On this project, so, um, just a quick background, retail pad, um, it's about half acre. Uh, this pad is um, something we've been working on staff with um, for a little while. And um, we're excited to um, hopefully see it move forward, so, um. Just a quick kind of. The way to, I think most of you have seen it before, um, it's a dual drive-through building, so a single, a single building. With, it will have two tenants with its own individual um, drive-through lane. Um, so the outside. Lane there that you can see will wrap around closer to the building on the north side for a pickup window. And then the. The other tenant to the east will have an inside, inside drive-through lane on that as well, so, um. Again, um, very similar to the, the previous uh, application, uh, retail pad. And uh, if there are any questions with staff, we're free to answer any of those questions, any uh, for the public hearing as well.
Commissioner Quinney?
Well, because I'm not an architect, this blows my brain. You have, I like a, like a. Example of something with the drive-up concept works that I can kind of picture in my head and understand what it looks like, because I'm having a hard time. Seeing how this is actually gonna work.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're out there. Um, this particular layout, um, not that I can like, you know, pinpoint you to. Um, and they're, they're more on the, the new side. Um, so essentially. The, on the south side of the building, there's the true drive-through lanes that you can see there. Um, one tenant or one of the restaurants will have that drive-through lane. And there will be directional signage that shows, you know, uh, restaurant here, you know, restaurant here. So the inside driveline. They'll stack there and order and pick up on that on the east side. We should have maybe done a little bit of better of an illustration on it, so it's a little bit easier to read. But the stacking on the, the outside stacking lane. Will be for the tenant on the west side, and they will wrap around all the way around with a big stack. To pick up on the west side of the building.
Very, that's, you're using east and west, I think, north and south. North is up, south.
Sorry, yeah, the south, the very south drive-through lane. Will wrap around the building and pick up on the, the, yeah, right there. The west ten, west side of the building, yeah, west ten. Sorry, the north side of the building, yeah, the window is on the, the furthest beyond west, I'm there, sorry. Yeah, so, so they will. Pull out all the way around the building on that side, so.
Alright, Commissioner Schultz?
Um, and you actually answered my question I had, so I'll come back with another later.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
I just didn't know if there's a hard barrier that separates the two lanes, or if it's just gonna be striped.
This is currently just showing the strip.
So there will be no hard barriers, right?
Yeah.
Just signage and.
Yeah, so at the entrance, we figured best to have, you know, signage of. The right drive-through lanes for this tenant, the left drive-through lane.
Cause I have concerns on both sides. If you put a hard barrier and they're in the wrong lane, then that poses a big problem here. But then if they're in the wrong lane, and they have to go through the other, so I could see it both ways.
Yeah, and then there is the, the very, on the very south side of things, there's, there's a full lane that, you know, can be wrapped around the whole building.
And I'm sure signage can help a lot.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how the inside lane exits. If the outside lane wraps around and the inside lane is picking up their, whatever they're picking up.
Do not walk.
Yeah, so they, they are cut in front of.
So that will be this, yeah, that area that we'll paint on the ground, do not walk, make sure it's pretty clear that somebody doesn't turn that corner. But they'll, they'll stop there on the, on the inside lane, pick up their food, and then as long as it's clear, nobody, everybody's following the rules. They will go outside to where that exit arrow is.
Yeah, I think it just.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I frequent the Starbucks on Fifth South and watching, trying to figure out how people maneuver that, and nobody. It's a learning curve.
Sure.
And there's always someone who didn't learn. So this is just concerning to me because I can just see.
I have a solution. We'll just get an after-hours, uh, customers out there.
Thank you. That was, that's my question, but at least you're aware of my concern.
Understood. Commissioner Richardson.
Um, I hear, um, what you said about the, um. You know, the learning curve there, but you purposely put a, what is that, that cross the, um, the lines, is that gonna be? So that on purposely it would turn into a single lane, right? When people exit.
Right, when they're exiting, yeah, I wanna make sure that there's no confusion there, that, that drive-through pickup window needs to merge to the outside.
So.
So that they're.
So that's there to help them go into a single line there rather than in the corner.
Right.
Uh, which would be, which would definitely be better. Okay, I'm just gonna ask, um. When you came up with this plan. Uh, did you consider maybe going? In from seventy eight hundred, having in, in, ingress and egress from seventy eight hundred rather than. On Caraway?
We figured that was probably not the best idea. I mean, we initially had considered having maybe just like a slip lane that came out. On seventy eight hundred for just an exit. Um, but that was something we reached out to UDOT and. Tried to have some of those discussions, then it wasn't really something they were interested in. Let us pursue, so.
They, they were interested not, and you not having an exit on seventy eight hundred and thirty. But, um. Were they, did you talk to, about, were they against having an egress and ingress from seventy eight hundred?
Yeah, kind of same story, and that was also the, the uh, the direction we kind of understood from staff, is they wanted the access off of Caraway. And as far south as possible, so that, you know, you're not right off of seventy eight hundred.
Okay, so they discouraged you from having the ability to get in and out on, on seventy eight hundred?
Yeah.
Can I just ask you why they, why you think that that would not be good?
I think it's because. You already have the access at Caraway, and the distance between that access and another access off of, it's probably only. Uh, what is it? It's like two hundred feet? I don't think that really meets the standard.
Sorry, I meant, I meant to not have the egress and ingress on Caraway, just seventy eight hundred.
Yeah, so I think it's just too close from their, their parameters, it's not something UDOT is.
Okay, cause you're probably only one way to get in and one way to get out, right? So you did that just on seventy eight hundred, that would, they said that would work?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look at, uh, staff will address that a little bit further too, so. Any further questions for the applicant? Great, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Uh, I highly encourage you to take notes. I'm sure we'll have you backed up. Taylor, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, I think this is a great place to kind of start on those traffic issues, um. Because we definitely understand some of the concerns, and so, yes, the first, uh. Iteration that we saw this actually had an exit lane, which was a exit only right out on seventy eight hundred south. That's not allowed. Um, we look at our master transportation plans, our plans are seventy eight hundred south. It's too close to that intersection to allow any access onto seventy eight hundred, so. Uh, both our traffic engineer and UDOT, neither of them would grant any access onto seventy eight hundred in this location. So that's why we're seeing the access come off of Caraway. It's also worth noting that this commercial pad. Is part of the uh, Apple Cross subdivision, which is located to the south of it. This was plotted and approved with that, so it's a part of that subdivision, it was always intended that. The access for this commercial lot as it developed would come off of Caraway rather than seventy eight hundred, because of some of those limitations there. So that's why we're seeing the uh, development designed the way it is. Um. The driveways are super confusing. It took me a long time to get my head around it as well, um, but I think I finally did. So what we have is on the very south adjacent to the building is uh, six stacking lanes, and that serves. The one tenant, so they have six stacking lanes, which is the requirement. So they, they enter in, they go straight. And then they exit if they do not block to the far outside lane, go, and then they exit, that's how it's designed.
Can you use the mouse to show us?
Yeah, so they come in here, you drive here, place your order, pick up at the window here. You drive through like this and exit. Tenant too have a much longer stacking area because they come in here. You stack this whole area, you then cross, continue stacking, pick up at this window here. This is where they exit into it, the exit lane, so.
Just to, to continue with that, where are they placing the order at on that one, on the outside lane? You try to sort of dance on first one more, that's where it's gonna be.
That's right. I believe it's right here at the north.
Right after they go through the exit area?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's how that works, um, parking, uh, here. There were required ten parking stalls, we're actually showing sixteen, and that's in addition to the stacking stalls which we're showing. Um, we traditionally count stacking stalls as parking because somebody either gets out of their car and goes in, or they stay in their car and wait in line, and so. They're both kind of considered parking stalls the way we look at it, uh, as staff, and so, uh, if we count the, the amount of. Parking and stacking, they, they're far exceeding the uh, parking requirements for this building. It's actually quite a small building and. Especially when you look at the customer facing area, I think only one of the two tenants has any customer area, and I think it's a. For four or eight people, it's, it's very small, but the ones at soda shop, the ones at coffee shop, that's the one that has a small interior area. Um, probably very few staff members here, probably two or three at each, so we feel like parking is, um. Uh, taken care of with some of those concerns.
Taylor, before you jump off of parking, could you just, uh, for everybody's benefit, how are the, how are the number of parking stalls calculated?
So parking stalls are calculated based off the square footage of the building, that's what the requirement is.
Thank you.
Uh, so moving forward, another concern that we know we're gonna hear tonight is about traffic. Uh, the applicant did. Uh, hire a third-party traffic engineer to look at this project. Uh, after doing their study, they did some traffic counts, they recommended no mitigation. Our city traffic engineer has also reviewed this traffic study and agrees with the study, recommends no mitigation. Um, what the traffic study shows is a total of six hundred and forty-six new trips per day, so that's people who wouldn't be passing this. Al- already, but would be making the se, the destination. As well as seven hundred and forty-two passerby, so when I see this, I say, oh, you know, I, I'm Jones the first soda, I'll pull in there. Um, what that. That looks at, uh, during the peak traffic times, this is one of the traffics the busiest. Uh, we're seeing sixty new trips during the AM and fifty-three in the PM, so, um. You know, about car, I mean, additional during those peak hours, those two busiest hours of traffic during the day. Uh, a- as mentioned, um, but there's not any traffic mitigation, uh, recommended here. Um, the intersection, uh, with seventy and Caro, it does operate. Uh, with some backup traffic of, you know, forty-eight to fifty seconds during some of those peak hours. That's probably just going to continue during those peak hours, there will continue to be some backup during those times, but there's nothing. Um, that can be done to mitigate that, that'd be reasonable for this application according to the traffic engineer. A- a- as mentioned, I think previously, uh, was brought up maybe on the last item. Uh, the elevations here did go through our D R C, our design review committee. Um, I think generally they are positive, but they recommended a concrete cap over that Wayans Scott. Uh, the applicant has indicated they will do that, but we haven't got those plans in yet. So one of the uh, recommendations that we're going to include the requirements of approval is to be updated with that, uh. Concrete cap on the Wayans Scott. Uh, the future land use designation on this, just like our last project, is uh, the commercial, and the zoning is the same, D S C two. Uh, so as mentioned, we're not recommending any conditions of approval, um, but we are recommending two requirements of approval for the site plan. First, the building elevation at that concrete cap, and the second is the applicant. Uh, revise their lighting plan and show photometric plan that shows no light trespass on to fifty six hun, or sorry, seventy eight hundred south. And to neighboring properties. Uh, so we are recommending approval, and at this point, I'm happy to have any questions the commission might have.
Could you go back to slides? Just quickly go through here, highlight, uh, the property to the east. Is that the daycare? Okay. Uh, and what is on the west side of Caraway? Empty field at this point?
Empty field at this point.
Was that also part of the subdivision plan?
It was.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the packet. What was the, the D R Cs, um, leaving behind? Adding that cement cap above the Wayans going?
So you know, I'm actually going to have to pass on that, I was at a, uh, bringing you leave, so I, I wasn't there to hear that person.
You're, you're absolutely glowing when you said that. Uh, was, was anybody present from staff that could? Address it? Well, we could ask Commissioner Hatch.
So let's speak up.
I will say that with the D R C when we met, we just felt that it would provide a more finished look by adding that concrete cap.
Yeah, the, the one with the, the members in the D S C from my memory, uh, just. Kind of had a question of whether or not there would be a cap there, so he just felt that it would make it a more finished look and. Prevent it from weathering, basically.
Having spoken with the applicant, they're perfectly open to this. Okay, alright. Okay, all right. Uh further questions for staff? All right, Taylor, I've got a a handful. I just wanna run through really quick. Uh.
Right.
Now, while this, I'm going through some of the uh email comments that we received. I thought maybe it's appropriate to try to address some of these upfront. So that uh our our public who's here to uh provide comments can hear essentially what the rebuttal is.
Yeah.
And then be able to address that and and help us think through this. Uh so we talked about traffic, we saw the traffic uh safety plan. I understand you dot and West Jordan City are not interested in having a a connection off of seventy eight hundred south, even if it's an exit only. And that is because of the distance, uh there there's, there's not enough space between Carroway and the next uh outlet to add one.
Yeah, but that's essentially it. And it's not only recommended, it's actually. Not like not allowed. And that's because seventy eight carries such a heavy volume of traffic. We can't introduce new. Um intersections or conflict points to develop, so that whole system down as we've heard earlier tonight, you know, seventy. Is a concern uh with has high traffic volume, especially during those peak hours. So we want to make sure that we uh allow that facility to function as well as it can.
Thank you. Uh had some uh comments about uh food waste smells, rodents and pests. Now, this is to fast food service, it's going to carry some of those kinds of things. Uh. Talk just a little bit about the uh the dumpster and how often it would be taken care of it according to code. What's going to be taken care of there?
Yeah, so as you can see, there there's a dumpster enclosure here on the site plan here. Um. Those type of things, they run into nuisance issues. So if it's becoming an issue, then it's too often. Um. I can have the applicants speak to that, but typically is what we would see with a dumpster, because it's empty weekly. Uh if it gets full, I know you can always call the the garbage companies and have them come uh sooner. Uh these are a soda shack and a coffee place, so we're not anticipating high levels of food waste or uh. That type of thing. It's not giant garbage generating uh businesses that are uh being proposed in this location.
Okay. Um. And then uh you mentioned about the th- this lot and the one on the other side of Carroway, which will eventually come forward for a similar. Discussion, most likely. Uh and not forecasting and saying it's happening next month. I have no idea, but. Eventually, uh being part of the subdivision, are they also part of the HOA? Do they still have the? Have fees that are being paid into that private road that we're aware of?
I don't know.
I I appreciate it. Uh feel free to address it as part of your public comment, but uh thank you. Uh. Maybe we asked. I am still here, right? Um do does that uh go one way or another? What are your thoughts on? That part of the subdivision plot comes off the private street. Is this outside of the realm? We shouldn't even be considering it uh as as part of this application because it's outside of the. The city code or is it part of what we need to be considering tonight?
Now, kind of being looked at recently, the adjacent subdivision of what it has uh. I was approved within it. I don't think I could respond to that question, but I think we've got to stick with what's already been approved, whatever that is. In this subdivision and in the adjacent one, so.
So that gets more into the the HOA. Uh and then the other comment, I just wanna mention upfront, uh public comment suggested rezoning the property. That is not an option by this group. The reason can only be initiated by the owner of the property. So if you're interested in making this no longer questionable, uh it's something that the residents would need to get together by the property and then ask for a reason. Uh otherwise, we are obligated to ensure that the uh owner of the property can. Can do with the property what's on the master plan, so. Taylor, any other comments or thoughts that I missed?
Uh I think one other one that came up was regarding the school to the uh east, the Learning Tree. Um there there's concern there about uh traffic and this is going to make them unsafe. I know the applicant has spoken to this a little bit. We have parking and then a ten foot buffer. Within that ten foot buffer, we have two trees. Um so I think it's in front of two of the parking stalls, but one of them doesn't. Or two of them don't have a tree in front of them. Um I know the app or the. The property owner had asked, well, maybe ballards or something be installed there. Um. I I guess that's something we could ask the uh applicant if that's something they're willing to do. But I know that was another concern we got in the email.
I appreciate that. Uh tell me to talk about a little bit more uh when we get to that point with the ballards. Uh my initial thought is. It would be a nicety. It cannot be a condition of approval. But uh Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, I have another question. Um is there a plan to um build a wall on any of the perimeter? Or fence or something?
Uh so there is an existing wall next to the Learning Tree School, and then there is a twenty foot buffer between the houses. And there's a a wall on those, so no, there is no other plan. Uh and part of thinking for that is. Having two walls and then twenty feet of kind of no man's space between them, that's actually going to make things more dangerous than safer.
Set the double dash line on the bottom of this page.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Excellent. Let's get the planning or the uh public hearing uh open, sorry.
From the example of this type of stacking line. Um I was recently down in Santa Clara by the apartments and there's swig and more betas that has the same type of. Drive through there. And of the thirteen times we went to Swig in a week. We didn't find any problems driving through there, everybody seemed to behave themselves. So uh take that for what it's worth.
Thank you, Paul. All right, now it's time for the public hearing. So if you are online, I'll address that first since I missed it last time. Feel free to raise your hand. Wait until called on and then you can unmute and address. Uh if you're here, you may come up to the podium. They'll have three minutes. Uh individually or five minutes as a group, uh representing a group, excuse me, one person speaking. Um. Yeah, I think we go online first if we're okay with that. Uh the fact that you asked that question. Uh I don't think we've had anybody raise their hand online all year. So this is great. All right, so who do we have online? And Jordan Mira, if you could go ahead and unmute, you'll have three minutes to address the commission, sir.
Okay, hi. Um I, sorry, my dog's barking now. Uh. Um I don't really have a comment, just a question. I know uh. That it's going to be a soda shop and a and a coffee shop. Uh Jenny, sorry. Um do you happen, or do we happen to know specific tenants at this point, though?
Uh you know, I I'm not sure we bring that back. I should have mentioned about the the public hearing. Unfortunately, it's not a question and answer section. Uh it's an opportunity to uh to draft. We'll take notes, we'll answer after the fact. So we have your question down, and we will ask that. So hold tight till the end of the commission, or to the end of the meeting. Did you have any other comments?
I did not, thank you.
Appreciate that. There anybody else online? Cindy Chaplin, the floor is yours. Chap- Chaplin?
Thank you. Um I live in the Apple Cross um neighborhood. I'm actually the very first home off of Carroway on that corner at twenty nine eighteen. And I can tell you every morning it is already hard to get out of this neighborhood with the traffic that's not just coming. On seventy eight hundred south, but actually all of us in the neighborhood actually leaving and then trying to actually come home and cross seventy eight hundred south to get into Carroway. We will oftentimes wait three to five, eight minutes to get uh to make a left turn into our neighborhood. This is gonna cause extreme amount of traffic. I can see cars already being backed up onto that lot. And then backing up into Carroway, trying to even get out onto seventy eight hundred. It's bad enough just for us in the morning and the evenings. Is there any plan to, you know, even widen maybe the entrance? Or since you can't go on to seventy eighth, is there any way of creating it so that it's not? There's a buffer between Carroway and. And the re- and the rest of the residences, not just that twenty feet, but off of Carroway going on to that property? It it just seems like it's there, there's, there's already so much going in and out that it's so hard right now to even imagine. The the ex- the extent of the traffic.
We we've modded the the question. We'll come back to it toward the end. Do you have any further comment?
No.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else online? Whoever's name Pixel Seven. All right, we have an applicant Pixel Seven. Uh if you would uh state your name for the record and then feel free to make your comment. Okay. Pixel Seven, I'm guessing that's the type of phone? Okay, Brian Beckstad, floor is yours, sir.
All right, um yeah, thanks, everybody. My name is Brian Beckstad. I'm a resident here at the Apple Cross uh subdivision that's attached to Carroway. I would like to voice my uh opposition to the proposed Carroway retail project. Um really, my concern stems from the traffic that this. Uh quote unquote dual drive-through uh project's gonna bring to the singular entry into my neighborhood. Our us as West Jordan, uh specifically because. This isn't something that has been around, so I don't know if this traffic study really is done justice to it. Um I wanted to point out that I believe that this project could will add really unacceptable increase of traffic at high. Occupancy time. So really, what it was already pointing out, that six AM or five thirty uh. Points of time where a lot of people are coming in and out of the neighborhood already. Um these are also two very high throughput businesses. I wanted to point that out at on a very small half acre lot. Again, with one single entry point. Um I think that's the key point here. Um. Really, that entry point is currently only that striped piece which was already brought up previously. And I will also voice my concern that it does take between five to eight minutes to turn in during those high volume times. Um so I really do strongly oppose this project and really sincerely hope that this commission will consider our concerns as we bring them up. That's everything from me. Thank you.
All right, Pixel Seven, we'll turn the time over to you if you can uh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Yeah, Nolan Kieska, current resident in the cottages at Apple Cross Settlement. Apologies on the mic issues earlier. Um I also would like to voice my opposition to the program and and not necessarily just because of the traffic, but. Think we're understanding the impact of the additional traffics. Wear and tear on the road, which as from my understanding, the HOA is responsible for maintaining. So unless there's some sort of plan or maintenance plan from this tenant to help cover that road cost, the snow bowing and additional equipment there. I think that needs to be considered as well from the team. In addition to the statements made from the other folks about traffic, we do have a second entrance. And is there any operations or I guess plans to open that? Entrance out of the subdivision cuz that might alleviate some of the traffic concerns. So I I would like a response to that. I know it's not a Q and A.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anne, if you would state your first and last name for the record?
Hi, this is Anne Fan. Um I'm also a current resident within the Apple Cross um HOA neighborhood. And I will also um repeat that uh my main concern is the amount of traffic. So. With that traffic study, I noticed that there was around a hundred and twenty additional vehicles that they stated out, I think if. Um I don't know if we can move back to that slide, but um I I know that. That's just accounting for the additional cars coming in. But when we're talking about high traffic, so those peak. Times, we're talking about traffic with multiple vehicles back to back on seventy eight hundred south going both. Um east and west. And then we're also trying to talk about cars that are going into the Carroway. So for vehicles that are trying to enter into Carroway, they're battling the traffic of going in seventy eight hundred south. Going into the neighborhood. And so along with that, we're talking about backup. At the point of Carroway where cars are trying to go into the business. Cars exiting out of the residential area. There are, there's multiple points of traffic that we're discussing here, and I don't know if that was accounted for during the study. Um I think another thing too is uh just an observation of the swig at the Macy's parking lot. Um I know that uh the additional cars here that have been listed. Um just for the coffee shop and s- uh uh a soda shop alone feels like a little bit underestimated. For what I've seen from the traffic at the swig at Macy's. So that's all I had.
Thank you. All right, we have cleared out the queue online. Uh although if you are online and you would like to speak, feel free to raise your hand. We'll just come back to you at the end. Uh so now, uh for those of you that took the opportunity to come, uh we're not gonna call you up individually specifically, but just. Politely, all of you come up uh in in order. Feel free to address. Uh it is already on, so you don't need to push any buttons. Thank you.
To Beasley Northrup, B E A S L E Y and North R U P. I take minutes, I get it. I'm the vice president of the HOA of cottages at Apple Cross. I have on my phone the actually approved plot originally that was allowed to have the building built on there. It's not a drive-through. I don't know if they looked at our CCRs that were approved that are. But with the state, signed by the state or city and everything, but we're not allowed to have that. This is what we're was put on. Also, yes, they are supposed to be paid fifty percent of the maintenance, and they have not been paid. So we've been taking care of all of the maintenance of that road. And as we know, more traffic, more damage to the road, more maintenance, snow removal, we pay for. They're gonna have to cop it up. Let's just be real. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maat, and I'm a resident at Apple Cross there. Actually, my home is the first home that would be behind the new developments there. Uh I'm not gonna talk about the personal and the safety concern that I have for my kids. I have six years old, five years old, I'm four years old, and they jumped off the fence the other day. We can put a solution for that. I'm just saying, I am concerned for my kids. This is number, one, number one. Number two. I am building the same things in a grand school city. I am building, I am myself building the same things. The city in a grand school denies us because the number of cars that there will be lining. On one of the drive-through will block the main streets, so they deny or rejected the whole project. So we modify our plans, so we change the concept of the restaurants. So we've only allowed five cars on the drive-through. Their concept is a soda shop. Which means there's a plenty of people in the morning will be starving to pick up coffee and soda. We already have a problem getting in and getting out of the, of the problem. The other day, eleven minutes I was waiting to get out. Usually it takes me seven minutes from my office to my home. When I was coming, it took me twelve minutes to get into my house, to get into into the into the division. So this is a concern. You need to consider other examples on other cities when you approve something like that. I have businesses, five businesses in twelve county. And one of them is across the street from a place called Gazelle. Gazelle is a soda shop. And you go to Grandville and see the traffic that was created by the low ways. Because you don't allow them to have two accesses of Main Street. You don't stop. Allowing anybody to have two accesses on Main Street. You only can have one access on Main Street. And this is gonna be a nightmare for us, for our family. I I can tell you from now, we already have. I I can tell you from now, we already have weekly accidents on Seventy Eight Hundred. Every week we have an accident and this is gonna create more problems. I object to it. I'm a personal embed. I am the one who la- I probably the last one who bought the home in that division. I pay seven hundred thirty-five thousand per my home value if this project built is gonna go down. And they are not paying for any of that, of the of the maintenance that we take care of. We are paying for and I I objected and I I don't think should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to push buttons now.
Hi, my name's Cliff Stevens. I was the first one in the subdivision. I created a presentation. I have a few hard copies. I don't yeah. Um, I I put some graphic and that's what I want to refer to it about. Um, and concerning traffic, um, I didn't, I I really do not believe that sixty cars an hour can exit Carol Way, uh, during the red zone. I do not think that's possible. Uh, I was out and observed that they over the past week or two. Once that light on Seventy Thirty Two West turns and the cars get down there, you tend to even turn right on Carol Way. Uh, you will wait until that light changes and till everybody else gets past. And then maybe you'll have fifteen seconds to just determine. So, uh, the track, I do, if you look at slide five, you'll see what I think is going to happen. Um, there's going to be so many cars that the, um, ingress and egress will will just take forever. And it's it's not just the time because the longer you wait, the drivers will put more risks. It is a great safety concern. They're they're gonna take risks and there'll be accidents. Um, I see a very low use, uh, low traffic business going there. That would be all right. Uh, and it's also been mentioned, street maintenance and repair. All the virtually all of the traffic is turning in to go to the fast food by by large nature. And so the the solution there should be that the fast food places assume total responsibility for Caraway or City of West Jordan assumes ownership of that street. Um, and I think that is a problem and through no fault of owners, it will, the people using it will just throw things on the ground. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Clint McMullin, also a resident of Apple Cross. Um, just to, uh, clarify, the peak hours of Seventy Eight Hundred South are from about six AM until eight PM. At night, there is no stop, realistically speaking, of traffic on that road. Um, you could say it's slightly worse during rush hour, but it is bad. Eight AM or six AM to eight PM, realistically speaking, um. Outside of just the normal traffic concerns that everyone else had already brought up, um, I would just like to state my concerns over the safety for schoolchildren. It is a high traffic area for schoolchildren to walk along Seventy Eight Hundred South in front of our community. Um, you know, during school hours in the morning and then coming home in in the afternoon, um, adding a coffee shop and a soda shop in particular in the morning would would be terrible, um, as, um, as stated by Cliff, uh, the the more they get packed up, that people are going to take risks, uh, those risks are putting schoolchildren in danger. Um, we have a very young neighborhood for the most part, um, a lot of people with very little kids who like to run around and play. Um, you know, I know we've got a family in our neighborhood in particular, their little boy loves to just go out and actually watch the traffic, um, right in the Caraway that he likes to watch the cars go, uh, along Seventy Eight Hundred South. Um, adding additional traffic on Carol Way of of any sort puts puts them at risk, puts all of our kids in the neighborhood at risk. So, um, that's that's my primary concern more than anything is is the risk of, um, safety for for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is, uh, Toby Jenkins. My wife and I Haley, uh, live in the Apple Cross community. Um, in fact, we're one of the properties located just south of the proposed lot. Um, and I'm not gonna spend much time talking about the traffic because it's been hit on a lot, but I totally agree with everyone's concerns. Um, as someone who actually works in restaurant industries and manages and runs a restaurant here in West Jordan, I don't think the design of this property with the two drive-throughs is realistic. I don't think it's gonna look the way they want. I think it's gonna cause a lot of backup problems. Um, and I think there's a lot of problems that are not being, um, mitigated properly to the property owners just south of the building, um, specifically, uh, noise, trash and light pollution. Um, with those cars backing up on the south side of that property, um, trucks, cars, very noisy. We're talking dozens of cars in morning hours. Um, I mean, my property is, you know, twenty, thirty feet from the drive-through. That that's gonna, you know, my wife worked overnight at the hospital. That's gonna keep her awake. Um, as well as the light just from the buildings, um, especially the parking stalls. They're literally directed right into my back windows. Um, you, we've all been blinded by cars with their crazy bright headlights and now those are gonna be shining right into my back window. Um, as well as the trash is also located right on the south property. I mean, that's ten feet from a house. I mean, is that really gonna not draw pests and infect to my property and those of my direct neighbors? I really doubt that. Um, and then, um, I I really lastly do believe that having only one, uh, entrance and exit um, to this property is really dangerous. Um, I mean, in case of emergency, the so the cars are gonna be blocking, you know, emergency vehicles or our own community members trying to get out. Um, uh, and I think it's, uh, irresponsible for the only point to be, um, at the entrance to a, uh, single family um, community, single family housing community. I think that's really responsible. So, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Crusoe. I am another resident of the community adjacent to, um, this proposed project. Again, I'm not gonna talk too much about traffic. Obviously, that's a major concern, but I would like to bring up some examples of businesses that have entrances and exits as close to each other as a proposed entrance and exit Caraway Seventy Eight Hundred South. Because we're hearing that UDOT says it's not allowed because it's too close, but there are other businesses in the community who are who have entrances and exits as close to each other. Um, Cal Ranch is that close to Twenty Seven Hundred West. The Big O Tires off of Seventy Eight Hundred South is that close to both Thirty Two Hundred West and the entrance to the building that houses Pizza Bag Cafe. The entrance to Utah RV Rentals is that close to Strawberry Drive. So there are examples of businesses that have direct access to Seventy Eight Hundred South that is that close to another direct access to Seventy Eight Hundred South. Um, so I don't know what this committee necessarily can do about that, but I think that that's something that should be considered and maybe something that should be discussed further with those who make that decision. Um, I'd also like to address a statement that was on page five of the proposal here. It's a statement that says the anticipated detrimental effects of the proposal have been addressed by the applicant. Um, I believe that all of the proposed solutions are beneficial only to the business and not to community members. Um, I don't think the solutions address traffic concerns completely. I think they address how to get as many cars into the business as possible, not how to access the community. I don't think they address the light or noise pollution that is barely likely to occur. Um, and I don't think it addresses possible pests or or impacts to having a food business that close to residents. Um, this is a an aside, I guess, but and I think this was noticed. I'd like to point out that there's a couple of paces in the proposal that discuss uh, Fifty Six Hundred West. I think that needs to be corrected, um, just to kind of make that complete if that's possible. Um, so I guess what I want to say is in conclusion, I I think that due to concerns of traffic increase, maintenance costs, noise pollution, I ask that this committee not approve this project as currently proposed. I think there are a number of things that need to be addressed. Things like how can we add signage or how can the bit the proposed business add signage so that people know not to utilize our community that has a single entrance and exit? Um, can we make another exit from our community so that we can mitigate traffic going in and out of Caraway? I think that there's a lot of questions left to answer here. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Kyle Pearson. I'm also a resident of the Apple Cross community. Um, and I think I just want to say, I think anyone, you know, who's looking at Utah can know how long these soda soda shop lines can get. Um, and we can speculate all day long about what kind of traffic it's gonna cause. Uh, but I think there are some pretty good analogies out there already for, um, kind of similar designs that bleed out into onto adjacent roads. Think about the thirst down on Thirteenth and Ninetieth. Um, that even has a design where people can go in and exit at a different place, but even then that uh, soda shop frequently bleeds out onto Thirteenth West and you see cars backing up out of that street. Um, and so I think the concern is totally valid about, um, this particular type of business with this particular design and layout, um, causing issues. Um, again, I'll just, you know, go the, um, point about, you know, there's not necessarily opposition to some sort of commercial property going in here since that's what was agreed on, but um, just this particular design with the with the drive-through and and everything. Um, it's what we're mostly concerned about. So I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Danielle Geiger. I'm also a community member of the Apple Cross. And I too have the same concerns about travel and traffic. I would like to also point out the risk factor. I do have driving teenagers and turning left is scary for lots of us. My son's girlfriend will take four rights instead of a left. Think about how that is for everybody coming in and out of our neighborhood. It took me twelve minutes the other day, eleven minutes. I'm sorry. You beat me by one. That twelve minutes, he's right, the risk that mitigates, but I also watched people pulling in and out of Caraway to go west on Seventy Eight and will get behind cars that are turning left into the north neighborhoods. So we're having cars go east and west, north and south, just trying to access our neighborhoods. Not just that, I don't have littles, but I have care for littles. And imagine the traffic that's gonna bring into our three cul-de-sacs that we don't currently have. Traffic of people that are lost, traffic of where are we gonna eat our fast food? We shouldn't be here. We should have called mom first. Our car broke down. And again, all of the HOA problems that we will have to maintain until the um, the applicants are ready to assist with the HOA. So thank you for your time.
Wait, anybody online again? Taylor, HOA president. All right, Taylor, uh, HOA president is what it says on there? Awesome. If you could, yeah, your last name as well. Uh,
Yes. Oh, sorry about that. Yes, Taylor Ma. Um, I am the current president of the HOA and a concerned neighbor as well, and I agree with everybody in our community to oppose this plan being proposed. Um, not only is traffic a major concern, but so is the safety of our children and neighbors. And as many have mentioned, trying to get in and out of this neighborhood is hard enough without extra cars coming in consistently. Um, I don't see how the drive-through won't back up onto Caraway and bleed into Narren Way and into our residency. It's a major concern of mine. Our neighborhood who pays the HOA dues for upkeep and snow removal should get priority getting out of this neighborhood, in and out of this neighborhood, excuse me, safely and shouldn't be disrupted by a corporation that does not need to be there. Um, there are soda shops and coffee shops up and down Seventy Eight Hundred, uh, three soda shops. I mean, we've got two in uh, Macy's. There's a soda and a coffee shop there. Um, we don't need these shops on every corner. The drive-through needs, or excuse me, the corporation who is planning this proposal needs to connect with the HOA board and the property management company and talk to us about how this will affect the dues that they need to pay. And our community needs to get a full picture of how this will impact us. Um, I want to agree with Anna and everyone before who has mentioned the noise, smell and pest concerns um, and ask that there be more studies done done, excuse me. I strongly ask that this commission, um, opposes this from passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further online? All right. Sounds like we've exhausted the comment. Appreciate everybody's time on that. We'll close the panel caring portion. Uh, I I rip your arms unified when you get together, hopefully a little barbecue and things in the community. Um, it's it's, yeah. I feel like I don't even know my personal neighbors and hardly see anybody anymore. So hopefully you see each other more often than just in this meeting. Yeah, go ahead.
I I just have to make a comment. I live in an HOA as well. Thirty-two homes. You guys have thirty-eight, so you're just a little bit larger than we are. We also pay to keep our roads maintained and I live off of Seventieth South right as you cross the Jordan River by Top Gulf. And the reason I'm on the planning commission is because when Top Gulf went in, we had absolutely no say because it's another city. We weren't notified and it made me realize how important, um, being involved in the community is. So I appreciate all of you coming out and I absolutely get your concerns because Seventieth South, getting out of our community onto Seventieth again, as you have experienced with Seventy Eight, it's a, it's an issue and it's a problem. As a planning commission, our ability to stop a development, we have very, very severe and precise criteria that we have to go on. And if it meets all of the criteria, um, it's difficult for us to not approve it. We will, I understand your concerns and we'll let the chair take it from here, but I just wanted to share with you what my experience is and why I'm on the planning commission. So when there's an opening, I would encourage all of you to see about being on the planning commission next year.
There will be at least one next year, yes. Um, so echoing a little bit there, uh, one of the things we cannot do is dictate what somebody could do with their property. If it's within the appropriate zone and they meet all the different requirements, uh, it's essentially going through. Now that said, you've provided all some very compelling reasons and thoughts, at least I think, as to some of the, uh, maybe some of the factors that, uh, the criteria that we can look at. So I do appreciate the 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 thought. Wanted to have a conversation with Taylor a little bit, yeah? I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. Uh, but always there's a couple of things I could, maybe you've made some additional notes as well, then uh, like to invite the commissioners to ask some additional questions. Maybe we'll invite the, uh, applicant as well. Only question I had is, uh, on the traffic, in particular, uh, the backing up on Carol Way. And one of the thoughts I have as I've been looking at this is, do we end up with a situation where people are waiting to turn out of that development? And the access into the the restaurant area gets blocked? What does that end up then causing? Um, and maybe I should back up a little bit as well. We have certain criteria that based on the the type of business and the size of the business, they're obligated to have so many parking stalls, so many staffing lanes, some of those kinds of things. Uh, so, uh, uh, address the the first question, but then I guess the secondary one is, can we ask for more under this situation?
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I think they're valid questions and I think we've had a lot of concerns about those tonight. Um, maybe Would be honest, I'm not a traffic engineer. Um I did not go to engineering school. The app hired a traffic engineer. We have our own traffic engineer who has uh lots of experience and education in that. And so when they provide this report that says it's going to work, uh we we tend to take their word for it. What we do see in the traffic study is, based on observations, not only of traffic counts and um similar sites. But they're they're showing that. Observations of queuing at compatible sites, sorry, comparable sites, the project queue storage should be adequate for typical maximum queues. We have in our code addressed that, uh we've tried to. So a a lot of cities don't have the stacking. A requirement at drive-throughs, they're starting to become more common, but we require sticks, uh six stacking stalls for each drive-through. We we exceed that here. Those are defined as being nine feet wide, twenty feet long, so um. We we have seen especially since pandemic, you know, more people driving, drive-throughs being used more and more often, and I think we're we're ahead of the curve on. Requiring some of those things. Um the one, the one stacking for the. Uh building that has stacking both sides, you know, there's probably close to twelve or thirteen stacking stalls for. For that one, such a significant amount of cars. Uh the recommendation from the traffic study was. In the occasional event the queues do exceed storage, that maybe somebody at the window needs to be directed to one of those parking stalls. Uh to wait for their uh order. I I go to McDonald's probably more often than I should. It's easy on my way to work. Uh and it's fairly common for that to direct somebody at the drive-through into one of the stalls to wait for their food. A- as we mentioned during the uh earlier portion of the meeting, but also in the staff report, they exceed the maximum parking, so. If that was the case and that had to happen, I think that is something that is appropriate. And and again, we also. The businesses want to be successful and if it's backing up traffic, it's impossible in and out of there. The business is going to fail because people are gonna stop going there. So I think the owner is really on the business to make it work and I think that's where you'll see the. Most uh done to make sure that that doesn't happen. So hopefully that's your question, Chair.
I did, thank you. Let's see, that one's more for the applicant. Oh elevation. One of the things we didn't, or I I'm sure you probably addressed and I've looked over, the elevation for the site. So I'm looking particularly at those that would come in and park facing to the south or that wall is. Is the site relatively flat from this to the south to the homes, or do we see an elevation change there to where the headlights could be peeking over the wall?
You know, I'm. I I pull up, find up and find out. I I'm not entirely sure on the spot. I do know that. There's a six-foot wall there and they have a twenty-foot separation. Um so that is a fairly decent.
I'm I'm being shown uh Google Earth images from a street view over here and it is relatively flat, which is what Larry had.
I also do uh believe that there is in their landscaping plans which are uh attached to this packet. They weren't in the presentation tonight, but. There's some shrubs and trees as well between the building and to the uh area bolt to the south and to the. East of, there's required street trees and parking lot trees which are done to kind of um, you know, provide some screening of the site.
Okay, uh do you have anything that you wrote down that you wanted to address?
Uh no, I don't really think so. I think a lot of questions are the applicant, um. You know, the concerns about light trespass, we did get a a light study from the applicant. We kicked it back saying, you know, you need to change up some of these lights, you need to show that these don't have trespass, so. This will be one of the things that we will touch on in the final site plan. The way we're including that as a requirement of approval tonight is because some of those things we don't feel like. Were addressed. Um and other things like, you know, noise, um. Rubbish, uh past attracting pass, those are standard things that get taken care of with every development. We have code enforcement, we have uh city and county ordinances which regulate those types of things and we rely on those.
Yeah, one of the things that I've learned since being on the planning commission is we can't make decisions based on what we think could happen. On a lot of these things, it's gotta be very uh black and white by that criteria as Commissioner Hatch suggested, so. I'd like to open a backup uh question for staff and the commissioner, then we bring the applicant back up afterward.
Chair. Sorry to interrupt. You 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 mentioned that were there any other items that we could address and. Perhaps it would be helpful, um um one of the uh the residents commented about the approved. Um HOA documents and the commercial um layout shown on this lot. That was purely conceptual. Uh the city has no entitled or or pre-approved plans for this property. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. And then another good comment that was made was the um. Kind of the pre-existing or the grandfather condition of driveway spacing along seventy eight hundred south. UDOT um has very stringent guidelines, uh. There, that being said, seventy eight hundred south is a is has been around for a long time. And there are a lot of driveways on seventy eight hundred south, especially on Redwood Road, these major arterial roadways. That um those driveways were were pre-existing before those standards were were in place. And so any anything new would have to comply with with the state standard. So again. Taylor did a good job at explaining the why behind that. It's for safety, it's for traffic efficiency. And so that's why the applicant got a very clear denial from UDOT.
Uh you mentioned the HOA, that was one of the things I'll bring up with the applicant when we get there. Uh but from a legal standpoint. The city is going through and enacting the city's codes. It's not the city's responsibility to enact the CCNRs of the HOA. Now, if the city ends up approving something that might be in conflict with those CCRs, it's within the HOA to address that themselves. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the city normally is not in the business of enforcing or getting involved with CCNRs unless, like you say, they conflict with city. Regulations, so. And I, so I, and I think one of the other issues when we get to it is uh when we get to the. Uh possible detrimental detrimental effects on the conditional use, I've got some legal comments there.
That that's sort of where my mind was going to, but if if Mr. Murray wants to wait, we'll wait for those too.
I think that would be great.
Okay. So in particular, uh. At the site plan, and we would talk about this before in training, right? When it comes to site plans, it's, you just look at the code provisions, are they? Are they complied with or not? And if they're complied with, you have to approve of it. Conditional uses are a little bit different because you're looking at what are the detrimental effects and if there are. Bonafide detrimental effects, you look at ways to um have, find the best conditions. And if you reach a point where the conditions don't adequately address. Because of the intensity of the use, there are occasional limited circumstances where you could in fact deny a particular conditional use, not that. Someone could, uh planning commission could deny any use, but a particular use if there's no way to tailor it the way it's currently um. For you. Yeah, particularly I'm looking at criteria C on the conditional use. And under C, the you've had a lot of testimony or evidence or. Information presented tonight, especially on criteria C three, C four, C six and C eight. Um because you're, as a planning commission, it says right there in the city code in that section that you shall determine if the proposed conditional use. As one of the requirements for the the zone district that are not being met. Particularly on C three, I think at least that what the information that's been raised is that potentially C through, C three, the site circulation. May not uh be working. Uh to me, it doesn't seem like the public that's. That have given public comments tonight are focused on the stacking. I think it's more that they're focused on once the traffic hits Caraway. Does that make it so the traffic doesn't flow on, so it's not internal to the commercial site their concern appears to be. Once that commercial traffic combines with the residential traffic is Caraway sufficiently. Able to to handle that traffic, right? That circulation. And then C four is. Uh talks about uh access to public streets and highways. You know, does that residential traffic with that business have the opportunity to get to the main street, namely seventy eight hundred? And then C six, will uh is, will this unreasonably interfere with the lawful use of properties within the vicinity? I think some of the testimony tonight has been that no, it's. Will slow down the flow even more from the residential neighborhood to the main street. And C eight, will there be any detrimental effects regarding public health, safety and welfare? So. Uh if you have a pinch point and I think some of the evidence has been that maybe people will take risks to be able to get past the. The impasse and does that cause more accidents? So uh. That's it, those are your thoughts, this based on what's been raised tonight, things that you might want to consider. Are those detrimental effects? Staff didn't identify it, you could. If you do identify detrimental effects, what are the conditions? Are the conditions sufficient? And conditions can even be that the the plan needs to be changed. Um you know, there's there's two. Stacking lanes too many is one. Um the most it can handle, and I think the challenge you're gonna have is you may not have sufficient testimony tonight because. And I don't know, I haven't seen the traffic study uh personally, but if it only addresses stacking and it doesn't adequately address. The confluence of all the traffic that's trying to get from the residential neighborhood. Collecting and adding in the commercial and getting to seventy eight hundred, maybe you need more information there, right? Maybe you need an updated traffic study, I don't know. Those are just the thoughts. To me, that's that's relevant to your decision, right? Some of the other stuff may be helpful, but that really, I think, is where your decision lies, is and how you're. Uh because a lot of that information that was given tonight is not clamor per se, it is information that could be considered. But what is a detrimental effect? What is the appropriate condition? Are the conditions sufficient? Um and do you have enough information from um from professional sources, from our own engineers? From uh from whoever it might be. And if you need to, you might have to continue it. Those are the kinds of things that. Uh that you need to take into account, but it shouldn't be willy-nilly. It should be based on those. Items, as you know, usually most of your decision is based on what are the current code, where are the current. Um regulations, but part of it is with the conditional use, these criteria, going through those hoops and applying them. That is part of our code, right? This this one code section, one of those eight listed sub-criteria. So if you have any other thoughts, happy to help, but.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, you've uh had your hand up for a little bit. Uh I'll only be able to hear from that. Uh Fisher, right now, Fisher Hatch had a question specifically related to what Duncan said. I was gonna ask, is. Is your call broadened specifically Duncan's statement?
Uh what he just said?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just have a comment. I don't know, whenever you can let me in, let me in.
Let let's have Commissioner Hatch go and then you can go.
Absolutely.
My question really is for Paul, sorry. Paul, as far as emergency access with the one in. One way in and out on Caraway, how does that impact if there's an emergency? I know there's the the other street, is it near? There's another access, but it looks like there's bollards on it. So I don't know how that impacts the emergency.
As far as uh emergency access to this particular site, we can reach. If we park on seventy eighth or on Caraway, we can reach the entire structure, which would be for firefighting.
I'm thinking about the residents inside in the community.
Like any street, it can be impacted. Uh hopefully people will get out of the way when we come on them and. But that can be true with any street that's around.
Commissioner Hatch, I believe I know which one you're talking about over by the daycare. When this subdivision was approved. The bollards were placed uh to allow for emergency access to get past those those bollards in back into that into that area.
Okay, alright, thank you.
If I may just add on to that, those bollards were put there because Apple Cross was more than thirty units on a single access. And so they were required to do that, but they didn't want to have a lot of traffic coming through there. Now, we can certainly go back and and look at that. I would imagine this would be HOA driven as opposed to the the project people. But we can look at taking those bollards out. I'm not sure what it would take as far as easements and things like that. But for us, we would rather have the bollards gone because then that gives us free access. But we could certainly look at that with uh. Our our city's traffic engineer as well.
Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Richardson.
I think that if it's possible, I think we need to, I think you you don't or the city needs to. To look at the traffic situation a little bit more. As uh, you know, because I think that, well. Traffic accidents on seventy eight hundred, I'm worried that people who want to pull in on Caraway from the right. There could be a line backed up on seventy eight hundred if there is. You know, a backup of people trying to exit out Caraway onto seventy eight hundred. Either making a left or making a right, making a left. If cars are backed up, then they then their vision might be um hindered. So I'm thinking that we need the UDOT in the city needs to to review a little bit more about the traffic. Especially if, I mean, I want the business to be successful, of course, and if they are, because I remember seventy eight hundred. Dutch Brothers Coffee opened up. And for, I think a few weeks, there was a real backup on the on the on seventy eight hundred. And um I know that if you're trying, you know, I know people run red lights and things like that. And sometimes drivers, if they're they're just, they just can zoom by. So I think that we need to update our traffic study on it, take into do do actual. Actual studies uh and update it. Maybe even to the point of taking out the bollards, if that would help. I don't know if that will or not. Uh or maybe putting a a street light there. Because uh I think what backs, well, what backs up right and left turns back up, but. I'll bet you anything that uh left turns really back it up. There's a couple of streets that I take on seventy eight hundred. Even from my uh where I get go out, um. I wish there was more traffic. Or what I do is I go out another way where there is a traffic light, but these residents don't have that option. So uh maybe even a traffic study to maybe think about putting a traffic light there. We, it's okay to slow down traffic, um. Sometimes, I mean, this is kind of an anomaly, I think, where we're at. Uh so anyways, I I re- I recommend that we get further tra- updated traffic study. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas.
I don't know if anybody had any questions for the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, but if they are not. One hundred percent clear or concise, I'm not opposed to postponing this vote and. Forwarding it to another uh date where we can get a little bit more clearer and more definitive. Answers.
I I let me, can I just say on that, I would disagree. They've done all their job to get to this point. They paid the fees, got them their job. We owe it to everybody that's brought us to this point. To either say yes or no, but here's why go back and fix it. And then we can see them make a back with the updated version. But I think we need to take an action tonight. Whether it's favorable for the applicant or not, it needs to be taken care of. Everybody's here for an answer.
I I'd agree with Commissioner Penny. I think we have enough in front of us that we can either note detrimental effects and conditions to address. Or can't address or.
Yeah, but like you said.
Chair, uh something that was just discussed, I want to make sure we talked about is, the traffic study did look at access from. The project onto Caraway and Caraway onto seventy eight hundred south. That's something I actually spoke to our traffic engineer with. About four thirty before I came over to this meeting, said it would be a concern, and he said. He felt like honestly that the traffic study was making the traffic problem seem worse than what in his opinion it would be. So for what it's worth, that's what our traffic engineer and the traffic study has looked at. So if the reason for tabling it is to answer that as question that has been asked by the traffic study, so just want to make sure you are aware of that.
Public caring portion is closed.
Uh, sorry, I'm gonna be the disagreeable guy here. I think I'm gonna disagree a little bit with Taylor. Now, we have a. A room full of people who just told us they corroborated exactly what the traffic study is showing. It's it says right here on the screen. Whole line of sight and then the mitigation that drivers need to adapt and reroute at peak times. Well, it's not fair to the thirty eight homeowners that are there. That's not reasonable to me, right? And I don't think that that's fair to say that I think we've overwhelmed this issue when everybody here literally just told us the exact same thing. That the traffic study found, that's my opinion on it. Uh, I I mean, I do it and every it's been here long enough to be known, so I'm one hundred percent in the camp, but let's get this business done. One hundred percent of the time. Gavin's over here, he agrees with it as well, he knows that. This is the one I'm putting a pause in my head, like, is this the right time to do this? So I I mean, I'm still I'm still considering this, but I think it's unfair to tell the people that are online and the people that showed up to the meeting tonight that. The traffic study is being overlooked.
Yeah, I'd say especially with the the reroute, you can't really reroute when there's only a single entrance and exit. Commissioner Shelton.
So my concern is also about the traffic, the uh the the stacking that happens. Already on Caroline seems to be a problem. Adding this sixty trips in the AM and fifty three in the PM. Correct me if I'm wrong, but really that's a hundred and twenty in the AM and. A hundred and six in the evening because you have to come in and then have to come back down. So that's not a hundred and twenty impressions on Caroline each hour. What's is anticipated, I feel like um. That's a that's a serious concern for me. And then also the um the crossover of the the traffic. In which that's going through the drive through, where they have to cross over each other, they they have to do that twice. They have to merge, they have to cross over each other, and then they have to merge at the end. And uh I just see little fender benders happening there and I'm not a fan of that.
Commissioner Lynn.
Uh, looking at the criteria, I see uh several in there that relate to traffic. Obviously, that's the biggest issue for the residents. But I'm not convinced. To me, the traffic is a detrimental effect. If we're looking strictly at the criteria. In addition, as I look at the traffic study, the traffic study seems to me to contradict itself. Because because we're hearing that the traffic study says everything's okay. But then it says mitigations. Commissioner, Quinney already said this, drivers will need to adapt and reroute to that peak time. That seems to me to be contradictory.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant to come on up. So you've you've been listening. Uh, first question, I I would like to see your thoughts and then we'll let you address the other things Gavin's talking about, but specifically. Uh, do you address the HOA communication with them, understandings of the CCRs? How you're uh addressing all that?
Absolutely. And yes, yeah, there's a few things I definitely wanna address there. Um, first, obviously, the applicant, Iron Horse Real Estate, we don't own the the parcel currently. Where we're just under contract to purchase it. So any back payments, uh, we're not aware of that. It's it's. That that needs to be taken up with the existing owner and we're more than happy to address that with them as well. We weren't aware that. That HOA payments have not been being made. Uh, we, as in Iron Horse, we are aware of the HOA and and have. Typulated that that payment into our numbers. So yes, we're we're totally planning on on participating our fair share of that. Uh, so that was always the understanding on our side. I as far as what's been done previously, I'm I'm sorry to hear that that that's been the case.
Could you, just a clarification?
Yep. So properties owned by third and uh will for a third party, another uh individual.
You are just designing a facility on their behalf or you're building naturally owning the facility on their property?
We are going to buy the property and develop the the facility. Thanks. But but up until now, we've had nothing to do with the property itself. So yeah, that that was one I definitely wanted to to get uh addressed quickly and first that. We're again more than willing to work with the the seller. It sounds like there's some back payments that that need to be caught up and. We'll we'll address that with them. And then a a few others, high level things before we get too far into it, before there are any other questions, sorry. Was that the only?
Yeah, I think traffic is the big one. I wanted to give, in all fairness, I wanna give you an opportunity to to talk to us about that before I make a motion.
Okay, great. Going back to the the tenants themselves, we've been talking uh soda shop and a a coffee shop. I I do want it to be clear, those are just conversations we are having. Nothing is set stone yet. It could be uh a sandwich shop, it could be, we we don't know quite, we've we've. Stated that it could be a a sandwich, uh Minnesota in a a coffee shop, but that's not baked yet, that's not. Uh, official. So I do want that to be clear as well. I know that there's a a concern there on. Uh, stacking and stacking out into the road. Uh, Taylor and staffs have been great. Uh, I can tell you they do have. The residents' concerns top of mind. And that that's something we discussed with them quite a bit on stacking. We we continue to increase it and we do feel that 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 shorter stack on the the east side. That's about uh six to seven car stack, uh but then the the longer stack is about a twelve car stack, which. In the the quick service restaurant world, the fast food world is is more than than. Uh, typical. And and we we wanted to make sure that we address that.
We interrupt that, just asking a question here.
Yeah, you said you're talking about it right now. The the two lane drive up stacking, that was. It seems like that was intended to address two shops that thrive on having a drive up window. If it were to come to to a place where there was a taco shop and then another to sit down. Or insurance company or whatever that was gonna be occupying the other side, are we changing this to where now there's only one drive through lane? That that definitely addresses some of the stacking concerns that have been talked about tonight. Yeah, we we do get that uh at least somewhere and I we could get really, which I don't want to, but based just on on current market conditions and and. Interest rates and prices, it it really only does make sense as a a dual drive through concept. So yeah, we we did look at that and then it just didn't work otherwise. Uh, a few other things. So I I know this this dual drive through concept is uh different than what a lot of people have seen. Um, we have seen it growing, a a lot of uh cities within the state are are looking at these. I I know of that Santa Clara um example that was brought up. There's also one in Caseville I can bring up, but. Yes, on paper, you look at that that site plan and there's a lot of lines and there's a lot of confusion. Um, but I I can't tell you from experience that that you pick up on it quick and it's not our intention to have people. Uh, confused and and having fender benders. We we wanna make it flow well and successful for everybody, so. That is top of mind. We are, we plan on having clear signage, clear directional signage, um yield signs where it does cross. And so that that definitely has been brought uh top of mind to us. Uh, but really, yeah, the the big topics that we we wanna address, uh obviously, traffic was is the biggest. Um, light pollution is absolutely something we've considered. Like Taylor mentioned, we did originally do a a photometric plan, kind of showing where the light. Lights will spread out to, uh, we have since, we're working with Taylor to change that, to make sure that there's no doubt that. That there's gonna be light pollution of the the residents to the south. Uh, so well, that one, we're absolutely willing to work with. And and make sure that everyone's comfortable for how that's gonna look. Uh, dumpster enclosure, uh. Again, we're doing everything to coat, uh as the city, the city is requested. Um, we're willing to make the the enclosure taller if that that helps with any worries of potential smells. And yeah, so we we're willing to address that as well. Uh, and then HOA, we we discuss, but going back to traffic, the biggest topic of the night. This is actually a question on brain. I I did notice that horny blade with the bollards. We have that question as well. What i- i- I, someone answered why they were put there. I think that could help alleviate a lot of the the issues by taking those bollards out, giving the residents a second means of of. Access to seventy eight hundred south. Why, why are those bollards there? And what was the reason behind that? I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask right now, but I I I think Paul brought it up and and. Yeah, Scott's were.
Got my recommendation that, I'll I'll catch you up. If there's anything else you wanna share, uh, absolutely. Regardless of what we said this night with the planning commission, I would highly recommend that you get with the HOA and start having conversations.
Yeah, we there's definitely some issues that need to be there, absolutely.
Oh, was there anything else you wanted to bring up?
I mean, that we we have a lot of and we we hear, I by no means do we wanna. Create something that's going to be uh a hazard to anybody and and their quality of living. Uh, we just wanna provide a a. Retail on a commercial path and uh and. Yeah, we we appreciate the comments, we really do, and we'll do what we can to address those uh moving forward.
Thank you. He handled that to you very professionally. Uh, Commissioner Richardson, do you have a question?
I just, I wanted to ask him, did you guys uh check out the um? You know, there might be problems for your customers to get in. And out. Also, I mean, I won't go to a drive through if it's gonna be really busy and really difficult and and all that. Did you guys? Look at that and see, I mean.
Yeah, going back to, I believe, uh, I'm sorry, I wrote down a lot of names, but. Uh, we we actually, yeah, our original plan was to have a ride in, ride out on seventy eight hundred south. We we pushed for it. That was. That was our hope to get that. Uh, we, a- as Taylor mentioned, we were were turned down. That was a hard no, that that we're not gonna get that. Um, so originally, yes, we and we had examples, we we saw the same examples we presented and it just wasn't.
Well, I mean, where where you're proposing to have the. Right, uh, did you guys check to see, I mean, because if there's a backup for people to get out. Onto Caraway from your from your uh retail. You know. That's gonna back up all your customers.
Absolutely.
And then if there's a line of residents trying to also get out. It's gonna be a while before you have an opening for someone to come in and someone to go out. I'm just wondering if you if you guys looked at that.
Yeah, we we absolutely.
Alright, thank you. Yes.
Of course.
Much appreciated. Any other questions? Okay, great. Alright, we'll bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or motion. Uh, one thing I'll mention, I. I don't get, I'm conflicted personally. I I look at it and I say, uh, if if not this, it is. Zone for commercial use. Uh, it meets the various conditions of approval, uh, the requirements of approval. So if not this, then what? On the other hand, I agree, yeah, another matter. Uh, I believe there are detrimental effects, in particular, access to the public street, I think is the big one. Uh, from there, we can cascade into the public health and and the other ones that Duncan had mentioned as well. So I I would love to hear what others think. Commissioner Lynn.
I wonder if we would eventually reach a better decision if we allowed some time. For the HOA to meet with the applicant, see what they can work out between themselves and then bring it back before the commission. Commissioner Quinney.
Uh, again, whatever decision they make doesn't address the 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 concern that I think all residents are feeling about the traffic. Does, they can work out their their issues with the HOA, so. Great, they should, but that doesn't address what we need to be addressing, what's our job tonight. Um, and that is something that maybe, I don't know. Who along this, these two all could answer the question, but Anna and I had this exact same thought at the same time. If we take off those bollards, what's gonna stop the people who are tired trying to wait for to go right, to go through the neighborhood? And use the access on the other side to get out on the other side, that just creates additional traffic and safety concerns. So I I again, I'm looking at this. Yeah, the bollards make sense because that gives the residents an access to get out and to get in, but it also gives the rest of us. An opportunity to go through their neighborhood and that's obviously not what they're gonna want. So I don't know what the best solution is, but I'd be interested to hear what you guys have to think about that. Whoever wants to, sometime.
Before that question gets answered, I I just want to reiterate that that is, that is your job tonight is to identify the detrimental effects. Then identify uh which conditions can reasonably uh. Address those detrimental effects. That's that's your right on the condition I guess for that, so.
And I think what, what I, the conclusion I'm coming to, and what I'm hearing from others, if I'm not misinterpreting, is. Those detrimental effects we're coming up with right now likely are going to be addressed in this existing site plan. Which means it's gotta come back as a separate item, not continued to a later date. But I would like to hear somebody address Commissioner Quinney's comment.
You know, that that's the thing, if roads are open, they're open. And if they're closed, they're closed. And so I think your question is if those bars are removed, will people use it? I think the answer is yes. And if it's closed, they they won't. And so it's. Which we want.
And it being a private street, they're uh they're uh. Recourse is really to put up a sign that says private road, you're not access.
As a part of the Apple Cross many moons ago. Um, that was exactly for what. The fire commercial stating is because two accesses require. Um, the Caraway empties onto a public street, but the emergency access. Accesses through private property and is, I know about the daycare when the subdivision bill. Was opposed to, I think, you may have been on the planning commission, Trish, I don't know. But they're more opposed to having that for the exact reason that we bring traffic across, but. Uh, if that is a condition, there have to be some research to see what. The actual cross access easement is uh through the Cow Ranch R B's. Daycare property because I don't know what it is right now. So that would have to be researched, but. In my opinion, it probably would cause more traffic through the neighborhood. Um, I see people cut through parking lots all the time and I'd hate to have people while I'm gonna. I'm tired of waiting to get to the daycare, something deals in this neighborhood now to get to the daycare. Or I'm gonna get to high school while I don't have to wait on seventy eight to get. Cut through the Cow Ranch parking lot, so I'm gonna cut through here in the neighborhood then. So I don't know if that's a good solution.
I'd be willing to hear from Todd Johnson, one of our city engineers that deals with traffic and transportation issues.
Sure, I'd be happy to turn in. I think a lot of it has already been covered. In that uh traffic works both ways, people cut through, whatever's convenient, they'll go through uh. Whichever works. As to the legal rights of access, um, my reflection is that it is emergency access, so that would have to be reworked. If it were to become a public access. And then again, this got mentioned, this is private property, so we'd have to be relying upon a third party for a. Renegotiation of that access.
Guys, it's eight o'clock, we're past our bedtime. I I just whipping up with ideas here tonight. Um, we do have several gated communities in the city. We do have several gated communities, um, Firebolt allows gates to be put up that would. Then restrict access going through Apple Cross and cutting out to where only the residents would be able to come onto the site. And exit it. So that's an option as well. It's an idea.
Just, we have gates at our community, um, for that very reason, our street is private, we have to pave it, we have to seal it. So we do have the gate at either end and they are the bane, I'm also on the board, and they are the bane of my existence, but they do work. Um, but they. As a last resort, so just my two cents.
Alright, so you just got. Motion.
I'll just make a quick comment on that, about the gates being expensive. People use GPS. Oh, I guess a lot of people don't. But you know, if you go into the neighborhood, I mean, if you look, you'll see that there's no other way of getting out. You know, that's another thing, so. People, maybe there's a learning curve, but still, I think drivers will go in, go through, you're right. A gate would definitely work. But anyways, sorry.
I see a foot in the button, push it. Commissioner Thomas.
I'll make a motion to uh reject this uh conditional. I'll make a motion to uh reject this uh conditional. Use permit.
I'll second. I'm sorry, somebody already.
I would say, yeah, I would say that maybe before you make a motion, you might wanna finish your discussion on the detrimental effects. Go through any conditions, and then if you can't find.
And that's what I wanted to make sure I put on record is condition C. On the traffic study. I think it's not clear enough. I think it contradicts each other. Um I think there's a lot of evidence to support the traffic hit situation on criteria C. And uh. Therefore, that's would be my recommendation. If somebody would like to.
Commissioner Sheldon, did you have a thought?
Yeah, mine was actually the same uh C four in particular. Uh has adequate access to public streets and highways, whereas any detrimental effects in traffic. Which may be generated that cannot be mitigated by reasonable conditions. So I I think that's the reason that I would vote to reject this.
And I think we're. And part of the reason why I wanna reject this one is I think um there is ways to to mitigate some of this stuff. I don't think it has come across our diets today. And I don't think we can make an educated um decision, unless that's my two cents worth.
Uh but I don't think we can reject it. We can just send it back for further discussion. So we either approve or we.
Yeah, you you could. It's called deny. Well, you could deny it. Uh but if you. Were to deny the missions permit, you need to have the rest of your discussion. Talking about possible conditions and then reach the conclusion that none of those conditions are adequate. I think it's premature to. I would recommend that you not immediately go to a motion to deny. You need to finish your detrimental effects and condition analysis first.
Uh and I think what we're hearing. Great to have the 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 guidance. Thank you, Duncan. So. Uh at least the the way that I've heard it is detrimental effects is uh, you know, let's see the the traffic in particular. Access to the public street and then the the subsequent issues that it comes up with. Uh we're not really seeing how that can be mitigated with the existing site plan. And so I think we're suggesting that it be denied based on that. Is is that sufficient to? Uh keep the city safe?
Well, first of all, you need to identify the detrimental detrimental effects on the. So when you deny, when you identify those, then you determine if there is a mitigation that you can put in place. To you know, to take care of that detrimental effect. So I think the the. Public has identified the detrimental effects, but I haven't been the planning commission identified the detrimental effects to the neighborhood. If I'm going to mitigate it, or did it not be mitigated?
Well, I'm sure we, there is not a uh mitigation process. I just don't see it here tonight. And that's kind of my issue. Um I think there's been enough evidence presented. That there is an issue, especially under criteria C, it's six, I had one up in front of me, but. Four, sorry, cri- criteria four, um that there does pose a problem. With what's been presented, and that's just in my opinion. Um I don't see, I'm. Look, be here if somebody's got a an idea out there that can mitigate it. I just, I personally don't see it right now.
So so it sounds like to me then that one of the detrimental effects that you're looking at based on the public comment, based on some of your discussion. Is that the traffic, if this use were going to place, the traffic would be so intense. That the uh that it would not function properly, right, for the existing residential combined with a new commercial. So that's part of what you're saying, and and you're looking a lot there at C four. Um especially the inadequate access to the public streets. Um then it sounds like another detrimental effect that you're talking about. Is related, kind of overlapping, is the C six that um. The there's what would interfere with the lawful use of the existing residential properties to continue to have. Access, especially when there's only one. Yeah, there's only one non-residential access. And then um. The the third detrimental effect, it sounds like you're articulating, is that. Uh the the heightened uh potential for increased accidents of those kinds of things, right? So if that's your three detrimental effects, then um. Wh- what would the conditions be? Uh you know, and normally you would go through an analysis of like maybe a. A wider streets or less traffic somehow. And so I think you you don't need a big discussion, at least some discussion. And maybe none of those things work, but I think if you at least jump through the hoops a little bit, um. You know, I I kind of referenced, you know, one drive-through lane or instead two, but really his application's two, right? So if he's not willing to, it's his application. He doesn't have to change it. So it's maybe it's more things like. Is it possible to have a wider uh? Accesses are poss- are there other things that could could possibly be conditions that could? Ameliorate the situation um and 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 at least have some discussion on it. And if you still reach the conclusion that no, then I think a motion deny is appropriate, but. You need to have some of that discussion on the record. What are those possible con- conditions first before you deny?
Sure.
Um, an idea, can we, and I'll I'll pose this to Todd. Um can we do a turn lane coming out of Carol Lane instead of just having uh two? What is it? North-south? Can we put another turn lane in exiting Carol Lane? So widening that entrance and exit, and also a turn lane off of seven eight hundred going onto Carol Lane?
That is a very good question. I haven't done the analysis for that. Um. I would assume that that would be part of the traffic impact study, which I have not read in detail. However, one important thing to consider is that seventy under south is set to become a seven-lane arterial in the future. That will would mean that that lane that you're describing will go away, even if it were possible.
Okay, and that seventy eight hundred south isn't scheduled to be, according to the mayor, starts in spring. It'll probably be done end of twenty twenty four. At the earliest. Oh, that's the saying. Never mind. Okay. All right, well, that was one idea.
Commissioner Quinn?
Uh. I'm 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 sensitive to the to the traffic like the rest of us, however. I feel like uh without some kind of proper. Thoughts through on this, I don't know that we have our standing to say then reject or decline this application, deny this application. Furthermore, I feel like doing so. Is just a big warning sign to any potential, I would tell developers and say, they're just gonna say no. This property was put together with the understanding that this specific person will get a dump on the Carolie. It's commercial use, which means it's going to have traffic in and out, in and out, in and out, depending, you know. This one specifically is the morning and evening when traffic is heavy. It's maybe it becomes something else where traffic is heavier in the middle of the day. I don't know, but I feel like if we could say we're gonna deny this application today, we're just telling everybody West Orange closed for business. On seventy hundred south. But I don't think that's the impression that we also wanna be be handing out. Or do you guys talk to me and say, I'm so worth it, but the next applicant comes along and we're gonna get, we're gonna have the same conversation again. The traffic uh. The traffic is gonna, traffic isn't gonna change. It's not. It's just gonna keep getting worse, and we've, everybody complains about it online. Our east-west double fares are check, period. And we can make it a seven-lane highway, we can make it a ten-lane route, don't care what size, this is never gonna be adequate to carry the traffic that we needed to carry. But in the meantime, we're gonna continue to. No thanks. Right, the people who own it right now have the right to sell it. The people who are intending on buying it and developing have the right to to do so. Based upon the criteria that the city set forth a long time ago, except that we approved as a planning commission. In twenty seventeen or whenever, Apple Cross was originally approved. And so while I'm sensitive to the issues, I feel like our applicants have. Done everything they can possibly do, and are still going to have conversations with the residents to make sure that they can mitigate as many of the concerns as they can. I I feel like that they earn the right to to move forward with this process. That's why I'm.
I think you you summarized well the the notion of if not this, then what, that I'm struggling with. Uh. I love working with staff. I I I'm a little bit trying to figure out right now exactly what it is that you're asking. Because I think we've already talked about a lot of this. We've talked about trying to get an access opportunity out of yourself. That's already. Uh I know, and maybe that's what you're looking for, is for us to state that during this discussion. Uh I feel like we're retreading things and it's late. I'm getting grumpy. Uh. Commissioner Richardson, we should bring us.
We'll start going through the list. Actually, hold up, wait, wait, can I, one more point on that. Um. Shoot, what was my thought? Oh, yeah, right now we have an applicant who's willing to do everything they can to make this the best possible situation. If we say no this time, we may get someone who's. Gonna just say, they're gonna just do what they wanna do, they're gonna meet the criteria, and they're gonna move on, and we're gonna get a less willing developer to live with the neighborhood. I just feel like right now we have a good situation. To fill in what's not necessarily an ideal situation for everybody, but it could be a worse situation than kind of following that line of if not. Now, then who, you know, whatever, so.
Okay, I was gonna say, um, your argument um that traffic is bad and it's just gonna get worse. So we have to approve this. I don't think it makes sense. Um. We have to not only consider as a as a commission here, as a board here, the um the um. Residents, but they think, I mean, not think, but the what the evidence that we've heard. But we have to be concerned of all the Western uh city of Western. Uh traffic, I mean, uh the people that drive on seventy eight hundred going south and north there, or east and west. Anyways, um. Okay. You know, uh the accidents that were full, we have to be concerned about those 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 citizens. That's what this board is for. I I uh. So we don't just consider that the applicant wants. I mean, it's really important. I agree. I like new development. It's really nice. Uh but we have to be, as a as a commissioner, we have to be concerned about. All city of West Jordan residents, and I'm, you know, I I don't uh. So I I don't, I favor all the residents rather than the applicant. Um I think that there's. Probably some other business that can go in there, uh but perhaps not a fast food or a retail. Uh because of the topic, I don't see any other, I don't see any condition that we can make. To the applicant that would make it better, unless they convince. Your doc to change their uh mind, make an exception. Anyways.
Yeah, it's fun. Please, sorry, Commissioner Lynn, I know you've been waiting. Uh first of all, it's commercial movement, so it's gonna get something commercial. Somebody's got to along and convince everybody, uh this commission and then also the city council to say, sure, let's change it to whatever. And then we're gonna get something else that's gonna come along and have the same issues. Uh so I I bet you don't, I don't buy that argument. It's just, it's it's second of all. Trying to figure out to be. Diplomatic here. All right, I. I I at this point, I think we've said all the points. We've said all our points. Until somebody come up with something that actually fits. What we would define as detrimental effect, that that Duncan says, yep, that fits. Larry says, yep, that fits. We're in the camp of this meets the criteria, period. We can, we can, I and I'm not trying to be insensitive, I promise. I would, I honestly, I would say. I would define this because I don't like what it's gonna do for you guys, but as Kirchner uh Alan said at the beginning. We follow the rules. So unless we can find something that specifically says, no, this is a detrimental effect. And we can make a make a concise point that it has to be a yes. It has to be, I'm gonna recommend an approval on this. So I mean, we can sit here and feel bad about it, we can say, I don't like it, or whatever, but at the end of the day, we have rules that we have to follow. And that's the way, now the rules are leading me toward following the recommendation, which is to approve.
Commissioner Lynn?
Um I think we have identified what the detrimental effect is in this track. That's the detrimental effect. And uh so I so I had this question, I I think for the applicants, but I'm not sure. Is a potential um reasonable condition? Would a reasonable condition be to uh uh have a one shop? Uh have one shop there instead of two? That would generate, well, yeah, I mean, the theory would be that one shop would generate less traffic.
Uh the the applicant did mention specific to that, that economic conditions not allowing them to develop as a single. Uh station or a single use.
I I think that's what I heard, but they can reiterate that if they want.
Um Commissioner Shelton? Please pull the traffic study again.
Wait, hold on, can I jump real quick between that? Just because I wanna clarify with Duncan, if we're gonna have some kind of detrimental effect, and we keep using traffic as our detrimental effect, do we not also owe a mitigation? Like, hey, I want you to go back and fix the traffic by doing X, Y, or Z?
Yeah, if you identify, uh you know, staff didn't identify any, right? But if you identify a detrimental effect, then you need to. Uh a reasonably anticipated detrimental effect, then you need to identify at least one condition that would reasonably mitigate that.
So we can't just say, I'm gonna recommend deny because of traffic.
Right.
I have a reason why, and I have the opportunity or option for the developer to go back and figure it out.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So um we're looking at the traffic study, and I've identified criteria C for. As a as a reason for den- denial, and and we look at the mitigations on the traffic study, and it literally said none. The drivers will need to adapt and reroute at peak times. So we we asked about. Uh an additional uh widening of the right turn lane. We we're looking at um, is there a possibility to create a dedicated right turn turn lane? That the would allow people to turn in to seventy eight hundred south off of Carol Lane without having to merge immediately. Uh that would be have like a a a little island or or buffer there. I think the answer is known to that because of the widening of nineteen seventy eight hundred south. So we're back to mitigations. I don't see why it's my responsibility as a planning commissioner to come up with mitigations on the fly. When it's clear to me that that the uh criteria C four is not being met, and perhaps you could address that.
Who's you?
Perhaps Scott could address it. Thank you. I pointed it though.
Larry's back, no?
Duncan, so.
Uh so because we are planning, mission staff, to go back and find reasonable conditions. Uh to mitigate these effects, but that would take um continuing to add them to another meeting, because. We're not going to be able to do it in an educated way in this meeting. And so we can do that if you want to direct staff to do that.
There we go. I already had one. Uh you know, I I think, oh boy, I can see myself going any three ways right now and. Uh to the same point, it's difficult for us to come up in a meeting with uh with mitigation opportunities. But looking at this traffic study, I think one of the things that's important is on the left is background. That's existing without development. On the right is part of the project. That's where we now add it. So what the traffic study is suggesting is. They didn't see any change to the existing condition. There's obviously going to be more vehicles and and some of those kinds of things, but it's still the same poor line of sight, still the same turning difficulties. Uh I'm I'm walking up with Commissioner Penny to that same spot, but I'm starting to go, I think I'm going that other direction. Uh in that I do see traffic as an issue. Uh I've looked at a couple of different options, or thought of a couple of different options. We've talked about them here. There's a potential for an. a dedicated turning lane uh onto seventy eight hundred south. We know that's not going to be able to happen. Uh if we forced Carol Way into a right in, right or out only, that's going to be a detriment to the community, probably not appropriate. Uh widening Carol Way isn't really gonna do any good. It already has a a uh turn lane coming in and a right turn out and a left turn out. So adding an additional lane's not gonna do us any good. Um I don't see any way of mitigating that without actually changing the site plan. And uh without getting an access on the seventy eight hundred south, that's just not. Yeah, but every fault that comes in here is gonna have the exact same issue. Commissioner Winn.
I like what Larry just said about the possibility of uh asking staff to study more thoroughly the mitigation opportunities. And uh postpone vote until then.
Maybe before we do that, Larry, I'll pitch on the spot. I'm staff two at another location. And if I'm asked to do something that I disagree with, it makes it very difficult to come up with mitigating circumstances. Does staff see an issue with the traffic or are we looking at this traffic study and saying it's it's good? That's what I'm reading here.
I I think the traffic's an issue. I think is what the traffic report is saying, the traffic study is saying is if nothing happens here, traffic's an issue and the site's adding essentially during peak hours, one car per minute. So that's why no mitigation is recommended by the sta- uh the traffic study is traffic is the existing issue. And is it their responsibility? Can we require them to clean up a problem that's existing? So if it is inappropriate, I think then that that's reason that it's gone through all the reasons why you can't deny or recommend mitigating conditions. I think that's uh kind of your job as the body. I'm I'm lucky it's you, not me, but we're we're happy to look into it. I think you articulated all the possible solutions I could think of. And maybe we can find something else if you direct this to, I'm happy to look into it. I just don't know what other direction we can go.
But so that's, this is turning into an intense game of tennis. Uh that's good. That's that's why I'm asking essentially is does does staff uh understand some of the comments have been made to a point where you could come up with some mitigation? I can't think of any. A a traffic light at that corner might do it, but that's a UDOT decision, not us. Uh so that's where I'm having a hard time saying what what could we put in place? And then I back out and say, is our responsibility? And I'm starting to go down Commissioner Quinny's path.
Uh it, we've got one of two options. We make a decision tonight, which is what we've talked about, or we put the ball in the developer's court and ask them if they're willing to to look at this, put this up so they can work with staff on the mitigating issues and then come back with it for their development plan. But it's their decision. If they want an answer, then we're gonna give them an answer. We're not gonna send this back to staff. And honestly, I don't see where staff gonna come up with some brilliant idea that hasn't been thrown out already. I mean, I just don't see where it's gonna happen. So I mean, it it I would be open to asking the developer to come back up and ask them if they wanna bring on this, but I think we owe them a decision unless they're willing to say, yeah, let's wait.
Commissioner, what was your thoughts?
No, I I agree with that. I'm not, you know, just trying to say that we can't come up with something, but I just don't see anything tonight. And if we're still willing to be at the table and and look at anything, any options, I think we owe to us as a body to do that. If not, then then we, just like what Commissioner Quinny says, we vote tonight and let things go where they go.
Do we need to suspend rules to bring the backup at this point? Are we okay?
Technically, that's in your bylaws. That's kind of at the end of the list, right? So you're just kind of continuing the the last item. So no, you can just bring him back up.
What'd you find coming back up just a minute? You've been listening intently, scrolling those. It's very good. This, we haven't had a meeting this long since I've been on the plane.
Really? I'm sorry, I'm the most comfortable side.
Yeah. We did it once about night thirty one. Anyway, we're not gonna try to beat that. Uh based on the conversation we just had, if we table this for two weeks, would that would you see benefits being able to come back and have a a stronger conversation with us on the traffic plan? Or do you want a decision tonight?
Yeah, um it's a great question. I honestly, what we're just cards on the table with with the seller financing and everything. And I know, you know, financing isn't uh a concern for anyone, but it it is for us. And what we've put into this thus far, uh we we feel like we've done everything where we've been asked with the traffic studies and and uh and so we we do feel that it it is out of our, I I don't know if there's anything else we can do to to fix this issue. Uh I don't see a uh path to mitigate that. Uh so I would say, yes, we we need an answer.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, bring it back for a motion. Commissioner Quinny.
Yep, it's time. Uh I move the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for the rent for our restaurant, fast food. Uh general on Carol Way, retail, approximately point five six acres of twenty eight seventy seven west seventy eight hundred south, subject to all the conditions and requirements of the approval.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that.
We have motion from Commissioner Quinny, second, Mr. Hatch. Further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
I guess. I guess.
Okay, we've got four noes, the three. How did that break? I didn't hear that. So uh Commissioner Winn, Hatch, and Quinny were yes, and the remaining four were no. Okay, so motion fails. What was that? Oh, wow, we got a lot. Who was next? Can we talk about that? Do we need to do a roll call? Can we? I think that's a good idea.
We've done a roll call, though.
All right, let's do this. Uh Commissioner Richardson.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I way out of line on this, Julie?
Okay, so Commissioner Richardson said no. Uh Commissioner Winn.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinny?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelton?
No.
Commissioner Hatch?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
So it failed three to four.
Commissioner, oh, no, we we have to keep going till we get a motion that goes through, right?
Well, it's for like, cause of the condition, you're so useful, you still have the site plan, right? Motion.
Oh, I'll just make the motion and we'll move through this. I move the planning commission approve a site plan for Carol Way Retail, a two tenant fast food restaurant located at twenty eight seventy seven west seventy eight hundred south, subject to all the conditions or all the requirements of approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Quinny second from Commissioner Hatch. Uh let's just go straight to a roll call.
Commissioner Richardson, no. Commissioner Hatch? Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Shelton?
No.
Commissioner Quinny?
Yes.
Commissioner Winn?
Yes.
I guess three to four.
All right, so that's the uh we don't have to try to get a motion that actually passes.
No, not according to your bylaws, so.
All right. You guys ran it to the long haul. How about that? Uh a lot. You are actually welcome to hang around. We still have half of the meeting to go through. But uh we won't take it negatively if you decide to leave. Uh moving on to agenda item number six, the Duffy's Lane subdivision at seventy two twenty one South Redwood Road, preliminary major subdivision plant, two acre, point four nine acres. Yes, sir.
Can we take a five minute recess while people are leaving and we can go get a drink? Not a swig, but like a drink of water at the beginning, maybe a swig of water that's down there?
Yes. What are you saying? Let's adjourn for five minutes?
Yeah.
I hope he's next one to go quick.
Well, obviously, you're under pressure on the usual conditions.
Yes.
I think they stopped it up.
I'm surprised.
Yeah. It's not their problem. It's their problem.
No, no, it's known for commercials, but is it reasonable to have two different sites running two separate rooms?
Yes.
Yep.
The.
My wife says I have.
Yes.
Exactly right. Time is five seconds until we restart. Four, three, two, one. All right, we are back in session. Okay, on to item number six, the Duffy's Lane subdivision, seventy two twenty one South Redwood Road, preliminary major subdivision plant, two lots and point four nine acres, an R one eight C zone, Green Rock LLC, Christopher Ames, the applicant with Lisa representing staff, uh be happy to invite the uh applicant to come up and present their application.
Evening, I'm Chris. I'm like the last one. Sorry, Chris Ames. On the lot, um there's nothing to really talk about.
And you're not, you're not gonna be passive right on.
I mean, it's a listing parcel. It's got frontage on an existing lake road, the sewer, the water meter already exists. So the plan, this family I bought it from owned all the land behind it. It was sold off in two phases a long time ago. And obviously, when they pre-planned the water meter and sewer, this was always the idea. So we'll end up with the existing house that will be renovated, the front, new house in the back on an existing subdivision room and meets all the requirements, setbacks with zone, everything else.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? All right, we'll invite you back up. Lisa, all yours.
Okay, I I think Mr. Ames actually said it all. Um in the hopes of expediency of this item. Um this is currently a double fronting lot, which typically is not allowed in the city. Um and this application would clear that up. Uh the lot one, which would be along Redwood Road, is uh about twelve and a half thousand square feet. Uh the the newly created lot in the back to the east would be just over eight thousand square feet, which meets the uh the minimum requirements for the zone district. There was a couple of um I think calls, emails from from neighbors in opposition to it. They they said they had some concerns about um the lot size and the house size, but there is there is plenty of space on this lot to create the the uh side C rambler um and then some. So staff has no issues with this. Um like the applicant said, it's already ready with utilities to go. Um there'd been some issues with some of the recorded documents that were just kind of messy and ambiguous, but those have been cleared up. So the land is, the right of way area is ready to be dedicated to the city. And staff recommends approval. If you have any questions.
Thank you. I wanted to point out, so two comments in those emails that came forward. Uh one was, is there gonna be room for the house? We've already established that. There's enough for the set packs. It needs to go. And the other one, uh kind of similar to that was uh a concern about approachment of the driveway coming in, would that end up going over on neighboring properties? That's also been addressed in the notion of it meets all the setbacks.
Yes.
So, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I just have one. Um what's the access to that, the second home? Is it off of Redwood? Like, does it? I guess I missed that in the.
It is off this, oh, I forgot, the road seventy two twenty. It's off the residential street.
Oh, thank you. That's all I needed.
Okay, this has been noticed as a public hearing, so we will turn this over to the public. He'll have three minutes to speak. Let's take a look at online first. Feel free to raise your hand. No? Okay. Anyone here would like to talk about it? All right, you're all eager to go home too. We will close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commissioner for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion unless there's any comments.
Please.
Okay. I move the planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision plant for Duffy's Lane preliminary subdivision located at seventy two twenty one South Redwood Road with requirements of approval listed in the report.
Commissioner Quinny?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tw- Thomas Penny, or second by Commissioner Quinny? Yeah, I don't, Thomas, Thomas and Kenny? Anyway, uh any who just got to the motion? All in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for hanging. Thank you for hanging around for all of that. Patience of joke, right there. Uh, number, uh, item number seven, the cottage is the Parker Place rezone, we're now moving to public hearings of planning commissioner recommendation and final action by the city council. This is at seventy-three ninety-eight South Redwood Road, a rezon of two point one seven acres from R three eight's senior housing overlay. Uh, to R three eight's. Standard multifamily residential, uh, and an amended development plan, Dave Toman is the applicant, Mark is here for staff, Mr. Toman.
Not Mr. Toman. My name is Steve McCutcheon, I'm a land planner in Liberty Homes, that's who I represent them tonight. I do have a presentation, I'm gonna try to go through this as quickly as possible, I'm. I'm gonna tell you a few things you might already know, let's go to the next slide. This is the location of the property, uh, near Majestic Arts. Uh, Majestic Elementary Arts Academy across from Saint Joseph's Worker Catholic Church. Next. Is the zoning that is surrounding it? Go ahead. General plan, medium density residential, you can tell I'm trying not to do much of this. The property is an existing subdivision and it's uh, actually an existing improved subdivision with a number of homes already built. Uh, Liberty Homes purchased the property about two years ago. And proposed to build a senior community. They've had, uh, they have. Five, six, six homes. Six homes that have been constructed and are ready for occupancy, there are two foundations poured. And they haven't been able to sell a single home in two years. And so they are asking for relief from the S H O designation to be able to sell the homes to. Families of any age. You have a question? Okay. Uh, this is a Google image showing the six homes that have been constructed and the two uh, foundations that have been poured, next. Uh, just a little matter of information, what has happened in the senior market is as interest rate, the senior market is a very unique market. Um. I do, I represent Leisure Villas, which has three communities in West Dorrin. And, um. It's hard to get. A senior out of their house in the first place and then to buy another one. When you tell them, one, that their house is gonna be worth less today than it might have two years ago. And you tell them if unless they're gonna pay all cash, they're gonna borrow money at eight percent, they all just decide, we are not moving. And so that is why, principally why Liberty Homes has had trouble. Selling homes to seniors, the seniors just aren't. Moving right now, they're not, they're not downsizing, the other thing, unique thing about Utah is. In Utah, between large extended families and LDS boards. A senior can stay in their family home a lot longer than. Most other areas can, I mean. You almost have to drag them out of them. And uh, and so it's kind of unique in that regard, let's move on. Uh, these are the destiny, the two principal restrictions in the uh. S H O designation is the two bedrooms and then at least one person has to be fifty-five years or older, let's move on. This is the plan as we propose to uh, change it, the five homes that have been built. Are shown in red, the two foundations. Are in blue and then there are additional. Uh, five homes that would be built. As I'll go through in a minute, Liberty would, would also choose to add some more of their family. Homes that would fit on these lots. And those are kind of what's represented in the yellow. They will also uh, take lot twelve, which is that corner lot. On Pearson Park and uh, Drake. And turn that into some parking and a recreation site. The. Plan as it's shown and being three D in a minute, will need to be changed, the staff was right, the. That we can't have lot of spaces off of Drake and the sidewalk would need to be continued. Let's go to the next one. Keep going. This is just a plan of what the. Uh, thing, just kind of. Take the idea that the parking space that would be on Drake aren't going to be there. Next one please. And these are some of the homes that will, that have been added to the amended development plan again, these are homes that. Liberty has built elsewhere that you can build on forty-foot wide pots, forty-five foot wide lots in this case. And so these would be added in the amended development plan. Go on. Uh, the other thing that's interesting about this, it's almost across the street, across the street and the south of the Catholic Church, Ivory Homes got a. Project approved, which is very similar, other than the fact that they approved it in the. Infill development overlay zone, similar sized lots. And they are able to sell lots, sell homes to anyone. And so we're just kind of pointing out that. That there's this project that was approved subsequently for Ivory. That is what we want to do, and they're actually having a fair amount of success with their project with sales. Go on. And I don't really need to go over these, uh, you can. All right. Hope you do, you don't want me to go over these. And uh. This is kind of like. Reading stuff you don't agree. But I would like to answer any questions you might have for me. By the way, and answer your question, Chair. I think what's why the council disapproved the earlier application in twenty twenty, nothing had been built on the site. The applicant got S H O in two thousand seventeen, came back in two thousand twenty, asked for relief and the council said, nah. I think it was just. Untimely, whereas now, after Liberty has made a pretty dominant effort. Open houses, ads, all kinds of stuff, they've really tried hard to sell these homes. And they've come. Come up flat for two years, and so it seems like a much more reasonable request to make now. That the S H O designation. Uh, be relieved so Liberty can sell the home to anyone once upon a while. Questions?
Commissioner Shelton.
Yes, hi. Um. Removing the S H O. Will add more residents to this development even. With the addition of the park. In my opinion, more people, yes, more people.
Yes.
Uh, so my, my question is, um. How will that affect the on-street parking? Uh, versus. Versus an S H O, uh, it seems that. You know, a family, maybe a young family that with, well, maybe a, a middle-aged family with teenagers. Um, with five or six cars, I'm, I'm just wondering what, what effect is this gonna have on access to the, the. The farms, this road is an access to the farm, right?
Yes.
Yes. What, what impact? Will the additional people in this development have if the S H O is relieved? Due to the on-street parking and can you trust that?
Okay. Could we back up to the site plan, please? One more, at least one more. Keep. Uh, let's try one more, is there a better one than this? No, okay, go forward. So one of the things we've done is that, uh, if you, if you were to visit the subdivision. The existing homes have, there, there was a board of adjustment approval that allowed ten, ten-foot front yard setbacks. On this property, and so the existing homes, both the red and the blue. Have minimal driveways on them. I, I paced them off at about fifteen feet on the average, which really would not be an acceptable place to park a home. What we propose to do, one, is to add six or seven parking spaces on Pearson Park Court. And also that the new homes we would propose to build would have at least twenty feet. In front of the garage for a park for parking off, off-street, those locations. Uh, there is no parking allowed on Pearson Park Court and. I can't read that from here. Drake Park. Right, what was it? Drake Park Court? Thank you. Uh, there is some parking allowed on Drake Lane, but really not very much, so to answer your question, what we've tried to do. Is to, we'd like to probably build homes. That would have driveway parking in them, which the existing homes do not. And then we're going to take lot twelve, not only put. A playground in it, which makes more sense if we're going to have families living there. And at least have another six or seven space, I think it'll be six spaces with a handicap space. So there would be some additional off-street parking. In the subdivision. We've tried to do the best with what we've. Had to improve the situation.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Quinney.
You mentioned that there's no on-street parking on the two courts and limited on Drake Lane. This is my first question. Who's gonna manage that? I'm sorry, who's gonna manage that, who's gonna be responsible for kicking them off when they're parking there? My second question is more related to the product that you already built. Half the products is already selling to the designated and intended. Occupants of these properties. Who, who's gonna come in with a younger demographic? And say, yep, two bedrooms sounds good, like if you guys had. Congressman that said, yeah, if this wasn't an S H O, I would totally buy one of these houses. Yes, like, that seems weird.
People roll up. Not realizing it's a senior-only project, they just see new homes being built that are offered at a reasonable price. But then they find out they have to be fifty-five or older, so. As I said, the, the Ivory project across the street is almost identical. And they're selling pretty well. I'd sort of.
I'd probably compare it more to the project that was just on the north side of the apartments from you that was also designated as S H O when it was approved. Because it's a little bit more similar in size.
Yes.
And they don't seem to have a bunch, a big problem with selling the product, I, I know for a fact that a lot of it's being filled up.
I'm sorry. They're not selling.
They're not selling this year, once the market turns, that's also.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is, they sold for a while, they've been there longer, the interest rates went to six and eight percent.
I guess that's my question, I just, it seemed weird to me that.
It's.
Looking at the show, is that the, removing the S H O is gonna suddenly propel interest in. Buying homes with higher interest rates that have two bedrooms, that just seems weird to me.
There's two bedrooms plus a. Yeah.
Lot of bedrooms.
And there is a basement that. You know, done well, part of it is, you know, there's twenty thousand dollars available from the state right now. For families purchasing their first home, there's lots of incentive, most builders like Ivory. Are doing all kinds of incentives. To, to sell homes right now in a market that really. You know, they're buying back mortgages, they're getting special money, it's just, you know, with, with senior market getting. Having its unique kind of, for lack of a better term, old dynamics to it. I actually live in a senior community in Sandy, a gated community, and uh, I like the fact that I do, but. You know, it's, it's uh. It's difficult today. To get seniors interested in selling when they know they're gonna be selling for less than they did two years ago. And that they'd have to pay cash. Uh, because the interest rates are. You know, unacceptable to anyone, most people. But there are, you know, like I said, Ivory's doing well on the other side of the street, there are things. That Liberty can do. To provide incentives for families. To purchase homes.
Another question, you, you said that the homes that are already built, they do have unfinished basements?
Yes.
So, um. If the S H O is removed, then you could have more than two bedrooms in, in those homes as well. Couldn't, could you, then?
Yeah, I, it, the, the, you can only build them with two bedrooms in it, it doesn't. Keep someone from adding on bed.
Oh, okay, the base, thank you, okay.
All right, we will bring you back up if there's any further questions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mark, you've been waiting patiently. It's all yours.
All right. I'll try and go through this as fast as I can, but um, um, so just uh, to give you a heads up, you'll actually be making. Uh, two motions tonight, one is for the rezon to remove the S H O designation. Um. And the other is uh, for the amended development plan, so uh. The reason for removing the development plan, one is to account for the changes with park and parking. Um, and then as well, uh. The original development plan, hello, language related to, um. Uh, senior housing overlay, which is the age restrictions and the two-bedroom restrictions as well, so. I won't go into that too much, pretty much already coded that, but, um. As far as the benefits goes, uh, remain pretty much exactly the same, um. In fact, if anything, it'll slightly reduce from six point nine. Down to six point five, so. Pretty similar. Um. And then as far as this overlays go, uh. Redwood Red, that's not a Redwood overlay, but that doesn't apply to the subdivision because it doesn't have frontage on Redwood Road, basically. And, um. Balance housing ordinance uh, wouldn't be affected because there's no multifamily here, so it's all single family. Uh, the conditions of approval, we are recommending six of them, uh, all of them relate to uh, the parking, um. I was gonna go under the purpose, but I'll. To the first version, uh, basically, uh, none of these have to do with uh, just getting city ordinances and making sure that. We have enough room that I can back in and out. Uh, and do so safely, so. Um, so if that, uh, staff is recommending approval of, of the rezon and the amended development plan.
Question for staff? Mark, could you, um. Go back to the slide about what the conditions are that are being removed? There we go. So we're just talking about taking out the two-bedroom requirement, but in fifty-five years and older. Uh, meaning that they could still construct homes with a ten-foot setback.
Correct, yeah, the setbacks didn't change, because that bedroom's all on the land.
And this is over beta, I'm right on the S H O overlay ordinance, and so it's just, it's more. There must be structure of them a lot.
Commissioner Quinney.
Oh, maybe I'm getting nitpicky and, you know, we've been here for three hours, three and a half hours and I'm ready to not be here. Uh, in the background information, the last bag up before we get to general information and then as it says. Um. During the pre-application meeting, the applicant requested feedback from the city council concerning such as the rezon, and was advised by at least one council member. To add additional amenities to the development, um. It's a nice gesture to put a playground. Um, but I feel like the. This, I, I don't feel like this meets the spirit of what was actually requested, because. Oh, nevermind, I'm not supposed to talk about my opinion about this just yet. I feel like we have our public hearing.
All right, well, this has been noted, look, there's a. Notice as a public here. Thank you. I think it's funny too. Uh. So we will open it to the public for their comments. If you're here, feel free to come up and. Is there anybody online? Okay, if you are online, feel free to raise your hand. Um, in the meantime, go ahead.
My name's Chelsea Clark, I represent Liberty Homes as well, and the reason I wanted to come up is because I'm a real estate agent, and as you can imagine, selling real estate right now is difficult regardless. But when you have to put a two-bedroom as a restriction, that doesn't even pull up on most people's search engines when they go to, to look for their points, right? So that's the main thing, as well as, um, it is really hard to find affordable housing. And we're in the five hundred thousand for brand-new single-family homes, we sell townhomes just down the road for. Low to mid-fours already, so we're trying to get this out to the market, we've heard time to time again. After our ground opening, after FM one hundred cam, after all the things that we did try to market to that fifty-five and older. When they come, especially, especially an agent that represents a fifty-five and older, they say. It doesn't give us amenities. We have a fourteen-lot subdivision, I understand it was approved before that way. In retrospect, looking back, we're right next to an elementary school, we're right next to an apartment building. That would be much better fit for a family. And yes, regards to the parking, we're gonna try to do that on the, um. Driveways, but also. It's more young families that we're targeting, more first-time homeowners, less on the move-up family, so I think that will mitigate some of that as well. So those are the couple of items I wanted to bring to your attention, thank you.
My name's Dave Clark, I'm the owner of Liberty Homes. I've not, I'm never good at this particular function. And so I always have to have people. Doing it for me, but. Couple of things, as far as the, 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 uh, the, what we're giving up in order to. Get this request, um, we're giving up a lot. And I don't know if you know what lots are valued at, even in today's market. There, you know, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars plus whatever it's gonna cost to make the top lot, parking lot and all that, it's, it's well, probably over a two-hundred thousand dollar investment.
It's, it's well, probably over a two hundred thousand dollar investment in order to get this, but. As you can tell by looking at me, I've been in this business a long time, and have never had this situation ever in my life. By the way, West Jordan Middle School was right there too. I taught there in nineteen sixty-nine, seventy, probably some of your parents. Before I got into real estate, but anyway, um. The fact that we're in jam is knowing your concern, I understand that, but as far as the good of the city. You, you don't need patient lot sitting there. We, we did whack down the weeds and we, we pulled off the excess dirt. And it looks a lot better now than it did two weeks ago, and we're, we're, we're trying to do everything we possibly can. Uh, but we still don't have one sale. We've had agents there six days a week, almost every week in the past year, year and a half. We've lost agents over it, as you might imagine, cuz they can't sell houses. The agents that are covering it now, we got in another subdivision that is selling, and so they get to go back and forth. But, um, as, to me, giving up a lot to try to mitigate the, the, the S H O. And create parking and then create a top lot or whatever playground, little park area. For the residents that we hope will have children, um, is a major move, but, um. I think the good of the city and of course for us, we've gotta get these fourteen lots built on and get them sold and. Get out of Dodge, so to speak, so. Any questions I could answer? Thanks.
Thank you. We have hands online, so I'll call your name and, uh, feel free to unmute at that point. Jeanette Drake? Jeanette, you can unmute and address the commission. Sorry.
A little bit different than what I'm used to for my other meetings, and I'm sorry I did not hear the gentleman before. So, how come you sent me home? You said this was gonna be continued till December, on December fifth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it must've been a misunderstanding. It was agenda item number eight that is going to December fifth. This is agenda item number seven.
Okay, what do you want me to?
Mom, read your talk, read your thing you prepared.
Okay, I will read what I prepared. My name is Jeanette Drake. My address is eighteen fifty-six West Drake Lane in West Jordan. I'm one of the owners with my son Daniel Drake. Of Drake Family Farms Gold Dairy, a Utah century farm. Established in eighteen eighty, which is directly west of the Parker Place subdivision. Since twenty seventeen, when this project was first approved. I've been to numerous public meetings with planning and zoning and city council. I do not enjoy being here. And I thought that I was finished with this routine. Here is my file of information and comments. Made by myself and my late husband Ron on this issue. It's about a three and a half inch file of all the different papers. I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for your service. You are real heroes. We were very naive when this all started. We granted permission for an emergency turnaround that made the project possible. We did not receive any compensation for granting this easement. We expected that we, we would be treated a lot better than we were. We have seen at least three developers. Gary Cannon purchased the land from the Park, Parker and Pearson families. Then there was Coldwell Bankers, Sage Homes, and now Liberty Homes. We've experienced dirt, dust, mud, a summer of a dusty, dirty detour to get to our property. Two cut gas lines, no electricity during milking time, problems with our irrigation system and our culinary water line. We certainly did not expect a curb to be built across Drake Lane itself going west. We lost thousands of dollars because customers did not want to drive to our farm store to purchase our products. The original plans called for a cement wall between our farm and the new houses. And the builder petitioned to not fulfill their obligations. We are very grateful to West Jordan City Council that we have this cement wall and that the curb has been removed. I hope West Jordan City will stick with the original design and not removes a fifty-five plus designation. Changing this designation would result in a lot more cars and no place to park them. We already have plenty of traffic on Drake Lane. We have customers, employees, hay and grain delivery trucks, and trucks to pick up pallets of milk. Further west of us on Drake Lane is Tico McCurdy's property. He is a cement contractor. He boards horses and gives riding lessons, so there are also horse trailers. And trailers with cement forms and tools going up and down Drake Lane. We have no intention of developing our farm. Even if we did, I do not believe that Drake Lane could handle the additional traffic. Changing the designation might help Liberty Homes, but it would leave our neighborhood with a perpetual traffic nightmare. Please vote no, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dan Drake, you are up next. Feel free to unmute, address the, uh, the commission.
Okay, I'm Dan Drake. I'm the owner of the property with my mother of Drake Family Farms, which is, um. Directly west of the proposed changes, um. I guess my mom summarized it really well. I would like to draw attention to the last sentence that man. We just logged in and we just heard the very last sentence. The last sentence that he said is he would like to. Get these homes sold and get out of Dodge. Well, you know what? Some of us have to live in this city. And some of us don't want to have the problems created by changing this designation. I believe it was, uh, um. Council, a councilwoman in one of these last meetings, she said that if we change this designation, we'll have a huge parking problem. And we will, we'll have a huge parking problem. The, the thing that will happen is we'll have so many people living in those houses, there'll be nowhere to park, and there'll just be a constant line. Of cars parked all the way down Drake Lane. It'll be a narrow little, uh, driveway that no one can even get down. And so I, I really hope that you guys will not, um, let him get out of Dodge. And get on with his life somewhere else. We need to stick with the development plans that were approved in the city. We need to stick with the plans that were made and promised. And, and that's, that's a fact, that's what needs to happen, and I hope that you'll uphold that decision. And I hope that there wasn't bribe money that was offered, and I hope that you guys will stick by your guns. And take care of our city so we can bloom where we were planted and not get out of Dodge. And get the homes sold, so we can get out of Dodge, so to speak. I, I, it's, it's infuriating. It's infuriating that attitude. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? All right, I think that unless staff wants to address them, I think that's all the public we've got in the meeting anymore, so. Hold on, close the, uh, public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or motion. Commissioner Quinney, you had some thoughts that, uh, you trailed off on. You wanna start us?
I was willing to sit back and see if anybody else had any thoughts, but I'll go ahead, um. I, okay, so back to the, to, to the playground, I, I hardly. Uh, think that, uh, pot lot consider is considered an amenity to anybody but. The three houses that are gonna be right around it, um, I don't see how that improves the city, whi- which. You know, the city is the one that granted this S H O in the first place, so we could have more houses put into this place. And then we're gonna change the development plan and put in a pot lot that doesn't benefit the city, so, you know, as Greg said, it benefits the developer. Uh, I'm looking at this criteria two. Specifically, since we're gonna talk about criteria at some point, the proposed amendment will result in compatible land use relationships. And does not adversely affect adjacent properties. I think it's very clear that, um, removing this designation will. Sure, it might not be a ton of extra traffic, but you're going to start seeing parking on the street. And they can say that the H O A will manage it, but the H O A is managed by and run by the people who are with houses who are parking on the street. And they're not gonna be real, uh, quick to pull the, pull the phone out and call them when they come kick their, their neighbors off the street. And the line of doing is, as the Drake said, pushing down the road and not allow horse trailers through. I've watched the. Uh, full exposure behind this development. It's my neighborhood, the Drake's are my neighbors. Uh, my kid goes to Majestic. I walk my dog along the street every day. And I've watched the traffic that goes in and out of there with like the garbage truck, and it's. There's not a lot of need to have on street parking and accommodate everything else that needs to happen for. This development and for the Drake Farm to be successful. So, I don't see any way that this benefits anybody except the applicant. And that seems to spin the face of, uh, of criteria two here, um, also that it doesn't really seem like it, uh. I don't see how it's consistent with the purchase and goals rejected of the city general plan. Uh, if we had followed the city general plan in the first place, um, I'm S H O on this, then we would have had as many lots in there in the first place. So, we made a concession in the front end, we need to hold the developer on this on the back end, and I'm sorry, Gary Cannon ran out of Dodge. To, to insult this offer, they moved and moved and moved, but I don't think it's our responsibility to make, um. Business owners whole.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'm going to have to disagree with Commissioner Quinney, um, in our, um, H O A, we have no parking on the street, and we are. The H O A, and we are made up of residents, and we do. Remove cars as needed, especially in the winter when streets are snowplowed, so. We manage it just fine, um, residents understand, we have the C C N Rs that backs up, so it happens. Um, I think the problem with this. Area is it should have never been zoned in the first place. It should have never been sold, um, but we did. And we did approve it. I mean, it was never compatible with the surrounding area to build this here, but. I have to think that we do need, we want these homes occupied, um, having homes sit unoccupied. Is worse than having them, keeping the S H O in there, so I would, I would be, um, more inclined to remove the. The S H O restriction and let families buy homes that are a little lower priced than most. And see if we can get people in here. Uh, the top lot does provide an area for kids to play. I don't know if Drake Lane is the. Right place to have that, just because it's such, it is a busy street, and it will be busy, um, but I think. This is the best way to mitigate what we've created in the first place.
We may call you up. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm kinda halfway between the two. Yeah, I absolutely agree, uh, on both measures. I think if, uh. Yeah, I, to some of the comments were before, just because it's senior housing overlay doesn't mean that they're only gonna have two cars. There isn't going to be on street parking, especially when family comes over to visit, so I, I think the, the via parking is kind of moot, uh, one way or another. I disagree with the, the housing crisis being a justification or door, uh, you know, inability to sell. It isn't our, our job to make. Somebody whole, especially somebody that's bought into a project that, you know, this is what, third iteration. So I get all of that. I also love the idea of being able to have some affordable housing for families. Uh, I hate that we're calling a five hundred fifty thousand dollar lot an affordable house for a brand new home buyer, uh. But, uh. Yeah, just thinking through. Commissioner Lynn, what are your thoughts?
The, the Drakes, uh, addressed the adverse, uh, effects that they are experiencing. And they clearly are frustrated by the fact that that has gone on for such a long time. Um. But it seems to me that if we leave the property as is. It deals with adverse effects only gonna get worse, cuz the property is gonna be undeveloped, untouched, nobody's gonna do anything with it. Uh, nothing's gonna happen, except it's gonna get worse. So see, to me, like, removing, removing the. S H O overlay would be the smart thing to do, so the property will get, property will get developed. And then the Drakes won't have any more problems with it. I don't know.
Question for staff really quick, Commissioner Shelton, um. The, uh, the, uh, allowance of ten foot front setback, can that be withdrawn? If the senior housing overlay, it's, it's there, it's done.
Yeah, it's done, so variance runs with the land for our city ordinances.
Okay, Commissioner Shelton?
My question for staff as well is, um. If the. S H O were removed. Uh. Partly conditioned to removal of the S H O was to. Prohibit street parking. Is that within the purview of the planning commission? Is not. Okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, yes, I'm with Commissioner Hatch. I'm inclined to approve this, um. This item, um, because I think it is better that these homes get occupied, and if, uh. Lessening the restrictions, taking the S H O off, it, it would really be helpful. Um, I, and we always talk about that, we want homes that are affordable, even though it's. This is still gonna be somewhat of, unaffordable, even though the, uh, because the interest rates are, are, are falling out. But I do know that, um, it'll be another possibility, and maybe somebody will be able to get in there. And, um, I think. Uh, it would be beneficial if we could help the developer, the owner of this property to be able to, to. Um, so. So I would be inclined to vote for it.
Commissioner Quinney?
I, I know it's overstated, I think, my, my case on the, the park, street parking, but that's neither here nor there for me, really. I just don't understand how it's our responsibility to make, uh, one company hurt if that's a benefit to another company. When the agreements have been in place since, I mean, she said twenty seventeen. Uh, they've been operating and, and building towards their future with understanding of a certain expectation that happened. Only to have it pulled out from them time and time and time again, because we feel like it's our responsibility to help the developer become firm. You know, we spent the last two hours arguing for our developer, that he had a right to do what he wanted to do. And if this just failed because he made a bad decision to put it to rights, saying a place is gonna never work, that's his problem. And it was not, you know, come back later and say, well, I'm sorry, I did this wrong, can I, can I redo? Who wouldn't prove it to him, right? So in this case, how is that any deferment? Cuz we just don't see how it's fair for us to say, sorry, Drakes, you've been making all these decisions based on good faith with. With Gary Cannon in the beginning, and I realize he's got no Gary Cannon, but they, it's, they've got a problem. That is not the Drake's responsibility to pay care of it, and if we say, we're gonna continue to give in to the developer here. It only continues to harm the business of the Drake Family Farm. I don't see how it's fair.
Um, we have before taken off senior housing, uh, overlays, um. I'm not sure if it's, you know, surrounding property already built or whatever, but, um, I know that we have. And I think, uh, it's not so much to make the developer or the property owner whole. It's just, it's also what's best for, uh, West Jordan, and I think that we should, um. So again, I'll approve.
You're right, we've taken that designation off of other properties when it makes sense. They use the S H O designation as a go around to get higher development density. He mentioned specifically the ivory project across the street that I'm info, that info designation. Guess what? They didn't use the right designation. I don't know if that was available. I don't think it was available when this project was originally approved. It's not really relevant. They used this as an opportunity to get a bigger, to get more development, to get more density. And now they can be back and saying, whoops, my bad. It just didn't make sense to me that. In this case, that we remove a designation that they get just cuz it's, it's negatively impacting that. I, I just don't see how it makes sense. I just wanna make, we need to, this does vote before the city council, so. Ultimately, it's maybe their responsibility, and they've already made that decision a couple of times. Um, I personally don't see that we should overrule what they've already said, so. I mean, that's, that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Shelton?
So, um. In response to that comment, uh, I feel like this is a little bit different now because the developer has.
Given uh a lot for parking and for a little playground. Um my concern is for sure the street parking and that impact it has. Um on vehicles coming in and out of the project. And then in reading minutes on a previous city council meeting. There was a mention of, this feels like a bait and switch, where we we have, we gave you a certain level of. Density with the understanding it would be an S H O, and now removing the S H O. Um removes that condition of approval. Uh for that fair density, and so I'm still up in the air. I'm not sure where I'm where I'm gonna vote on this.
Commissioner Wen.
I'm gonna follow up on Matt's comments. Um if this property is developed according to the way Liberty wants it. I'm not still quite clear how that is going to harm the 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 Drakes.
She's she's come into this meeting and given numerous uh testimonies about what's under her business over the years. Uh and yeah, some of them are in the past now because they're no longer driving down a dirt side where they're kicking up all the dust and and creating havoc for people who. Have been trying to get down there. But. The the impact that's, you know, she gets, she talked about power being impacted during during their milking time, their issues with their culinary water. These are all things that have impacted them over and over and over again. Things that were never part of the original plan, things that were not their responsibility to take care of, and whether or not the the developer took care of it. I was really involved in that conversation. But they have. They have altered and over and over for the last six years with this. And I just, and so I I just don't see how we got, we can continue to feel like it's okay to continue to make them bear the responsibility of this development.
I guess what I'm uh what I'm thinking though is that if if the development is allowed to go ahead as they as these folks have proposed. That gets all those troubles uh just taken care of. There, you know, what once the project is done, then Drakes are done with it. Uh the the uh. They've been imposed upon in the past, and that's not right. It's unfortunate. Shouldn't have happened. But it seems to me like if the project stops now, where it is. That things are just going to deteriorate. And not get improved at all.
They're still responsible to keep the land intact. They own it. Uh but let me just take the great side of this conversation just for a moment. If we re- if we remove this because it's hard to sell houses. What precedent are we setting for future developments to come in and say, oh, what was me is hard? Can I change my plans too? Alright, so let's take, let's take the breaks out of your way. The majority of the problems, the Drakes of faith are in the past. And we can't say and honestly say, I know that they're gonna have this problem or that problem in the future, because you're right, once it's done. The traffic impact would probably be venom. And if we have a responsible H O A, then the traffic will stay off the street. But we're still gonna have ten-foot side setback on the on the driveway, and it's time for them to say, we're gonna make them twenty feet. But when it gets down to it, how, we can't hold him to that. He can do ten foot, he can do ten foot driveway if he wants. That's that's what he's been given, right? So taking the traits out of this entire equation. What precedent are we setting for the rest of the city at this moment by saying, sure, let's do that? And I like Jay's comment, the city council has already said no. How many times? Those ones? Multiple times, right? Why do we all suddenly feel like we have the the responsibility to say, city council, I think you got this wrong?
I I don't, I don't think you you keep saying that we're. Trying to make the developer whole. I don't see it that way at all. What we're trying to do is improve the city. And if for this property to get developed improves the city, for it to languish as it is, does not improve any.
Commissioner Hatch.
Um Commissioner Quinney, I'm gonna disagree with you again. I don't think we're setting a. I don't think we're setting a precedent, and I would hope that the planning commission. Each case is taken on its own merits, by its own conditions, by its own everything, and it's almost insulting for you to think that. If we've done it once, of course we're gonna do it for everyone else, because we won't, and we don't. And we do case, take them on a case-by-case basis for requests like this, so. Um I don't think we're setting precedent. We are making a decision based on one piece of property that needs to be resolved. And that's it.
Commissioner Richardson, uh Sheldon.
Uh so ultimately, I think the question I need answered in my mind before I can vote is. Are there uh? Are there conditions that are affecting, you know, that that are not? Do we disagree with staff on the on the conditions for approval? Or is the traffic going to be a bigger problem? Is is the uh? Uh street parking gonna be a problem for for the neighbors who have to access their farm? If if we agree that those. That those are are problems that that can't be mitigated, then we need to vote no. If they, if they're a problem, if they are problems and that's and staff is right, then I guess we need to vote yes.
Commissioner Richardson.
Um I know it was mentioned that city council had already said no, or they designated S H O. Um but I think circumstances have changed. Um because Commissioner Quinney said it was in the past. So maybe this time, uh this city council will approve. So um.
Let's see.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah, go for it.
Um based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council concerning the proposed rezone. From an R three eight S H O zone to an R three eight zone for the cottages at Parker Place located at seventy-three ninety-eight South Redwood Road.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion. Commissioner Hatch, a second from Commissioner Wen. Further discussion to the motion. Uh can we just preempt this and go straight to a vote? But just in case.
Commissioner Hatch. Yes.
Commissioner Shelton. Commissioner Allen.
No.
Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
No.
Commissioner Quinney.
No.
Oh my word. Failed three to four.
Yeah, and so it'll end up going to the city council. You'll have the opportunity to present before them.
Do I, let me work on the second motion so we can have that on the record. Um based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council concerning the amended development plan for the cottages at Parker Place. Located at seventy-three ninety-eight South Redwood Road, with the requirements of approval listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Wen, second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, a second by Commissioner Wen. Discussion motion, Commissioner Thomas.
No, I'm just, oh, she's a bitch up and then they're really, really fast. Scott, you want?
I want maybe just one point and not discussion, just a statement. Regardless of how how it's moved forward with that, so you do have an opportunity to talk to the city council. Obviously, they're they're gonna be the final uh saying on this. I would highly recommend if you're gonna stay with the type of amenity that you have, moving it away from Drake, putting it in one of the back lots. That's the only thing I've got to say, so.
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Wen.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinney.
Nay.
Commissioner Shelton.
No.
Commissioner Allen.
Nay.
Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Okay, uh so that will go to the uh city council. Hopefully, since they see a split vote, they spend a little bit more time. Listening to the conversation, so. Uh that'll be one to listen to. Commissioner Hatch.
On item number eight, I'm moving this forward. Sorry, Commissioner Allen. I'm I'm ready to go home. Um I I would, for the Palmetto's general plan amendment, rezon and master development plan, I would like to postpone this until. Uh December fifth meeting.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second. A motion from Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Quinney, all in favor. Uh any opposed?
Motion freezing unanimously. Commissioner Thomas.
I make this a motion, let's agree. We heard you.